We'll call the Water Pollution Control Authority and regular town council meeting to order for Tuesday, February 6, 2018 at 7:06 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Judy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angelone?
Here.
Councilor Candelora? Councilor Vaughn? Vaughn? Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Big Neil?
Here.
Councilor Zentan?
Here.
And I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Diamond.
Councilor Diamond.
Mayor, could I just, a moment, just to say publicly, say thank you for Janet to fill in as substitute today, and Michelle unfortunately is under the weather and couldn't be with us, and short notice she was able to fill in.
Thank you.
Glad she's here. Thank you.
Next item is approval of minutes. Previous meeting, January 16, 2018, town council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections?
I have just one correction on page 14 of the ECG group representative is Ashley Heinz, and in the, just before the motion, it's referred to, she's referred to as Ms. Klein. Said you'd want to correct that, should state Ms. Heinz.
George?
Yes, Vaughn.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angelone?
Abstained.
Councilor Candelora? Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Neil?
Yes.
Councilor Zentan?
Yes.
And we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. Correspondence, citizen statements, none listed. Unfinished business, nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen's statements and petitions underwater pollution control authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of boards, committees, and commissions. Economic Development Commission?
Yeah, they met last night and had a great presentation from guest speaker Barbara Mulber from Rex Development on a number of issues related to growth, job opportunities, site finder selection. It was a lengthy discussion for, I believe, an hour and a half or so of her time, and a lot of give and take and collaboration about ideas and economic development. So I think it was well worth it to invite her. There was a lot of information. I think she even had some handouts we could certainly share with the council with respect to the economic climate within the region, and some of the movers and shakers in terms of what's happening. But also, they discussed the economic development position, which is later on in the agenda, and support of the part-time position, and that's item 13A. They are also looking at liaison from the council, and I know, I think they've reached out to Tom and to Marie Diamond. So wherever the council wants to go, they'd love to have a representative liaison. They're, I'm not sure of their next meeting, but I know the chair is here, and I don't know if it's going to fall into March, or if you're going to have a special, another special meeting.
It's going to be March.
March, okay. So we have some time.
You never know.
Yeah. But overall, it was a very, very good discussion with the Rex Development representative.
Good. Thank you. Next is Park and Rick.
Park and Rick met last month. One of their items of discussion was the signs for the parks. There's a couple parks that do not have any signs at all, and some are badly in need of repair or replacement. So Lauren is going to, she actually sent an email today to get onto our next agenda for, she has quotes from two different vendors for signs, and I think we really need to move this forward to get this done, in addition to trying to button up the town signs as to exactly, because we've been talking about this for a long time, and if nothing else, we should at least get the park signs up and going. So she does have some vendor suggestions, she has some quotes as far as with the signs that they're looking to do, and then we'll just have to decide what we're going to do and where the money's coming from if that tourism budget is still available for those signs also. They also, some of the youth sports groups have reached out to them as far as their wants for fields, which they will take into consideration when they develop their budget. Park and Rick will also be having a special budget meeting next Tuesday night, the 13th, at 6 o'clock, to develop their budget and their capital budget to submit to the town manager. And that's it.
I thought that there was some work done by the town planner on signage, particularly for the ballfields and...
Well, she was working on it, but nothing has come back to us. There's, I mean, we...
Well, she may have some preliminary quotes and things.
Correct. So between that information and what Lauren submits, that will, can come forward to the council so that we can look at it.
Well, maybe they can work things out between them and come back with some agreed-upon decisions that they would prefer.
Right. It's all about which way we want to go on the signs, because we were presented with three or four different options, from relatively inexpensive to, you know, over $5,000 a sign or around.
But those were entry signs, those weren't the ballfield signs.
Right, but there was discuss, there's been discussion that they want the signs on, they want uniformity among the signs in town. So are we, are the ball signs, park signs for the parks going to be the same as the entrance signs, or similar in style, but a different, so that they look the same, but not necessarily constructed the same?
I can't imagine them being constructed the same. They're not for the same purposes, they're going to be put onto page fencing or something like that, perhaps.
Well, most of them are standalone in the parks right now, like North Farms Park was a standalone, Northford Park was a standalone, Totaka Valley Park was a standalone, Mill Road does not have a sign at all on there, but it would probably be a standalone sign also, very similar to the signs that enter into town. I mean, they're standalone signs. So that's, and then the discussion that we've had that we haven't decided on was, are we going to do sponsorships of the signs to help cut down the cost or the decoration around them? Who handles it? Does the town handle it, or does EDC handle it?
Well, those were, that was only discussed, as far as I recall, for entryway signs, not for, not for the park signs, the sponsorship idea.
Right, but since the Park and Rec had brought it up, they were just asking, are we going to do the same thing for those types of signs, to get more sponsorship? They had some ideas as to how it could be handled, how it could be handled, so those, but that's not their final decision, it ultimately rests with the council on that. So...
So that'll be on, for next meeting?
The next, yes, in two weeks. And maybe in between that time, Mike, if you can have Lauren and Carrie get together, and maybe in the packet they can have a proposal between the two of them, that they come forward with us.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah, we'll definitely work on that.
Next is Police Commission.
Police Commission meets on the 12th, Monday, the 12th, the next regular meeting, and they have a budget workshop on tomorrow, actually at 5 o'clock.
Fire Commission?
The Fire Commission met last week, and I wrote down a few things that they talk about. Chief, you can jump in whenever, whenever you want, you know more about this than I do. There was a question about surplus equipment, things that are in the firehouses and around the area, I guess, and we don't, they don't know what to do with. It's all junk, am I right, Chief? Stuff that...
There was a discussion at the Board of Fire Commissioners' meeting about equipment that is no longer used, and that has no value to us. So in particular, we have a VHF radio antenna, and the process of assembling a letter that will go to the town manager that, under the direction of the Board of Fire Commissioners, declares that surplus equipment. So it will be handled insofar as the town ordinance is go with surplus equipment, and going out on the surplus bid list that is currently being used by the town.
Okay, there was talk about the budget. You guys discussed the budget?
Correct. The Board of Fire Commissioners unanimously voted on a budget for Counts 4220, 4225, ambulance, capital, fire capital, and CIP programs. We have a meeting scheduled Thursday morning with the town manager.
And I think there was also a discussion on the generator for Station 1, is that...
Correct. The public bids came back. The Lowe's bid was $67,000 and change. We had appropriated $60,000, and Anthony Espizzi, who's the finance director, we had a discussion about making up the difference based upon where the funds were originating from. And again, a letter of recommendations where where the bid will go to the town manager. The last thing I'll mention is that the 2017 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program application was submitted. The grants closed last Friday. Today, I was able to print off the entire application. PDF file was forwarded to the town manager, and I'm sure he'll circulate it to the council.
Thank you. Next, Board of Education and Town Communications Subcommittee, Town Council.
There was no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting, but I will talk to Rose and you about setting up a meeting soon.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
At their last meeting last week, they finally approved the Farm Brewery text amendment. So I know there's at least one guy that's looking to go forward with that. And then the other thing, they accepted the application that we see on our agenda tonight, or for information here tonight.
Thank you. East Shore Health District?
Actually, I spoke, and Mike Pasquale, and they're doing the agenda for this Thursday
Next is Town Manager Report. Update on public works, storm-related repairs to the fleet.
Yeah, we had mentioned and talked a little bit about the snow events, but also secondary to that was the, what it does to the vehicles within the fleet, and Fran had, couldn't get, we can't really get into the, well, we could, but it'd take a long time to get into the overall detail of each and every breakdown and repair, but what he presented was a trend in terms of where these repairs are going in an aging fleet, and that's the secondary part about looking at the breakdown of the aging fleet. And I'm sure he can answer questions with respect to, you know, some of the major issues that happen, that continue to happen with snowstorms that stress and strain the vehicles. But it seems like, you know, it's just an ongoing issue that they've got to deal with, and the trend doesn't look good when you look at those numbers in the last five years. So, you know, Fran is here to answer any questions you may have with respect to detail or condition of those trucks, but if you just peek to the next page, it kind of tells the story with, you know, trucks that are 31, 30 years old, 29, 25, five trucks right at the top there that are rather old, and, you know, to get 30, 30 years out of them, I think they're doing miracle work down there in terms of keeping, you know, rebuilding plows and everything on those, those plows and trucks that they've got. So I'll certainly turn it over to Fran, let him speak to that. But it was, not that there's any urgency or need to do it, but just as a prelude to the budget season, something to have in your head, and if you need and want more detail, certainly we can provide that leading into it, just to give you a sense of where these expenditures are going with, you know, to the storms themselves and to the breakdowns and repairs. So it was just to give you an overview, a highlight.
There's some urgency that was mentioned, because replacement of a plow is nine months to a year to make that acquisition, never mind the issue of the money, but it's not immediately available. As it happens, I saw a stunning new plow when I was up in Orchard Park, New York, and of course, they get 63-inch snowstorms, as we know, if we watch the bills. But they were able to get their plow at a very good price through their state bid. They piggybacked off a state bid, and they also bought a plow with a, what I was told, and I have no idea what it is, an ELP body, so that it can also be outfitted for, as a dump truck, as a salt, as a salt truck, and a flatbed. So they get multiple uses out of the one vehicle, but it still took them, they got a good price on it off the state bid, but it was still nine and a half months in the acquisition. I have the name of the person, if you're interested in seeing what they, what they bought.
Okay, review of plow trucks and future replacement.
That's just, again, a list Fran had put together just from 10 years and older, and so you've got the breakdown of the year and make of those trucks, and again, it's food for thought as we enter into budget season and talk about capital plans and future planning, about whether or not, you know, we should have sinking fund, I mean, a revolving fund in terms of, you know, the reserve fund, so to speak, with respect to big capital purchase items. And I think, when you look at that, you think, geez, you know, I think we've gotten, you know, they're at the end of their life cycle, you got 30 years out of some of these trucks. I know the town in the past has done their plans of, you know, investing and had capital reserve to do that. I think we're at a point now where I think we should have some thoughtful discussions about the rolling stock, and not only there, but police and fire as well.
So Fran, do we have any trucks less than 10 years old?
Less than 10? Yeah. Couple.
Okay. Like plow trucks, or just dump trucks?
Like, there's one, one ton pickup truck, but for the most part, it's 10 years old now.
On all of your big vehicles?
The big stuff is all huge.
Is all listed here?
There is listed, yeah.
Okay.
There's a couple of, my truck isn't on here, that's a 2012. There's one, there's three trucks that are under 10 years old, that's it.
Okay.
So it's just, I mean, it's a real brief, but it's in order, it starts at the top at the, you know, 30, 32 years old down. So it's just a picture to see, and, you know, Mike and I talked a little bit about is, we have to get back on some kind of a capital rotation. This thing is not going to, I'm not looking to get this thing fixed today, tomorrow's not, it's going to take years to get it done, but, you know, beware, you know, it's out there, and we need to start funding, and, you know, something that's a consistent funding basis. You know, the last 10 years, we really haven't had a consistent number, and, you know, it's big, there's big numbers. I mean, this is, and I looked into reframing the trucks, and it just doesn't pay. I mean, I got a price of $30,000 for one truck. That's just putting the frames on, whatever else is wrong with it at the time, you know, all the parts that needed to be changed adds up, and if it's a buy...
There's going to be a lot of money in that reframing.
Yeah, they weren't knowing it because of the whole admission, and that's another issue we have going on, that I reached out to our representative, because I was told there's some money available through that Volkswagen settlement that the state got, that they were buying trucks, old trucks, to get them off the road, and giving you a certain amount of money for them. So trying to look at that, if that's even available in our state, I know it's available in New York State, but they pay you to get rid of the truck, you can't sell it, and then they give you money for a decent amount, but not enough to buy a new one.
So are, I'm not real familiar with makes, but are all the Mack trucks, like your snow plows and your heavy-duty trucks?
Yeah, that's all, anything that says Mack is a heavy-duty truck, basically.
Okay.
And that's, the newest, the 2000s are already 18 years old now. You know, so, you know, what I was trying to come up with, what is a good, what is a good time to get rid of the trucks, where you could sell them and get decent money for them, and put that money into the capital improvements, and help offset the cost of the new ones? But, you know, we're so deep in this, you know, the 30-year-old trucks, you know, by the time we get that location, so just, you know, I'm tossing it back and forth, I don't know what to do. Like, I say it's 20 years, with the amount of stuff, the salt and the rust. We rebuilt all of the trucks up there that are the Macks that go all the way to 27, 94, I'll just stop there. Every one of those trucks, we either bought a new body, we built a body, we built the plows twice, everything that's in there. And now we're down to no body and just the seams that sit on the frame. So we have like around five of those trucks, if the body's gone, you're not going to replace it, it's not worth spending money on another body, and we just bought it for a frame. So it's not, it's not something that, you know, it's got to be done tomorrow, but we really seriously have to look at it, because it's not getting any better, and like Mr. Miller said, it takes a year to get it. So even if you say today, you're not going to see it, so a year from today, so the years go quick.
I think that's why we want to try to have a Planning Goals Committee meeting, so we can maybe come up with a future plan for equipment, basically. So hopefully, we can get something started.
Councilor Miller mentioned about a state bid, and I knew that was going to come up, and I bought on state bid, a lot of the small trucks we do, and we bought one truck on state bid. Part of the problem is the state has different specs than we have, and they're a lot, a little bit light duty, because they only keep them for 10 years. I know they just started a new program, so I don't know where they're at now, but that used to be 10 years and it's gone. But saying that, I just, because I have trucks in the, that you're going to look at tonight, but the state bid was out there, so I went out and reached out and got prices, and found out that it looks like I'm going to be saving some big dollars, putting it out to bid. That's why you're seeing a bid tonight, because, you know, we're going to see if it's true or should be.
That's good.
It's good money, and we're saving.
On your maintenance account figures, do you project the numbers for this coming year will be about the same as what we're seeing in the recent years?
Yeah, it's going to be higher. I think it's going to be higher. The numbers are up to like December, like we really haven't finished out January yet, so it's kind of tough to say, but looking at my budget, I'm through maybe over half, well, over half.
Really?
Yeah. But that's not coming January, you know, running February. It seems to kind of calm down a little bit now, even, most of the stuff is going to break, breaks the first couple of storms, but it's just showing you a trend, it's going up and up and up every year, from, you know, when the trucks are moving, obviously.
Yeah, so it shows 23.
Lots to think about.
So what are you thinking you've got to put in the budget for this year? Like, do we need a, do we need a snow fighter?
I put one in, just to, you know, to go, but I'd like to save that for the, because I'm all over the place, I've done it, and we changed it, and, you know, it's, how do we work it in a number? We come up with a number, we'll have to work in for it, but honestly, it's like $400,000.
One truck?
No.
What you think you need?
What we, I didn't, what we didn't do last year and the year before, I plugged a couple things in, but I'm really looking for a number, saying, you know, we're going to do $200,000 a year for the next couple of years, and then try to start that way.
Like 20 years ago or longer, what was that number we used to put in every year? Was it 100?
It was 100, 150 some years, depending on what the needs were.
And that went away under like...
Carl.
Two, three managers ago. I mean, we really got to get back to what we got.
But as I said, we have to be back.
We got to pick a number, and it's really got to be done.
Mike, Planning and Zoning referral, is it fairly quick?
Yeah, in fact, it's just there as informational, that Carrie had passed along, and Councilor Rose had alluded to, that the, that's in your packet with respect to that 1111 Fox and Road, so they're looking for a change, and if there's any...
So we all know where that is, is that the Dollar General property?
It's a Dollar General, yes.
So the rest of that, some of the rest of that property is zoned residential?
Yes, it appears that at the back half of it, yeah, and they're looking to change that R40 to B1, to get the entire parcel to be uniform with a B1 zone.
So when they send that to us, it says, like, who, I mean, are we even able to comment on stuff like that? Or is it just here for information? Like, we're not, we can't comment on it, right?
Right, it's merely for your informational, it's an informational point, just so you're aware of it, and that it's going through the process.
Okay.
All right, and last is Connecticut DOJ.
Hold on a second. So how is that decided?
In P, with, through P and Z, Planning and Zoning.
Planning and Zoning Commission, if you want to attend that meeting, they listen to the public.
Is their meeting on the 15th, is that a public hearing? It is a public hearing. Okay. So looking at the map there, it looks like it's the, kind of the hill behind Dollar General that is R40 now, and they must be looking to change all of that to business.
Right.
Are we supposed to be having a public hearing?
Yes, we're going to have one. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move back to, it's 7:35, we have a public hearing on purchasing ordinance.
There was a public hearing notice published in the Sound on February 1st. It read that North Bramford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 6, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the North Bramford Town Hall, Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number 2018-1, which amends Chapter 84 of the Code of the Town of North Bramford entitled Purchasing to include the following new language. Purchasing agent shall have the authority to purchase supplies, materials, equipment, other commodities, or non-professional services from a vendor who has been selected as the lowest bidder within the prior 12 months by another public agency using competitive bidding procedures substantially the same as or similar to those normally utilized by the town when the best interest of the town would be served thereby. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk at Water Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website, dated at North Bramford, Connecticut, the 17th of January 2018. at Water Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, the seventeenth of January, two thousand eighteen. Lisa Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk.
So maybe before we start that, and you guys know, normally I can figure stuff out in legalese, I'm totally confused what you just read, so I think, could you try and put that paragraph in English?
Well, I can definitely read it slower. So, uh, the exercise, uh, with a request was, uh, to, uh, modify the existing purchasing ordinance to allow, uh, the, uh, the town the ability to piggyback on other governmental agencies that have already gone through a procurement process.
So that question is government agencies in the town or somewhere in the state?
No, government agencies arguably anywhere. It could be, it could be, it could be the state of Massachusetts, it could be the state of Rhode Island, it could be the town of X in the state of New York, you know.
North Haven. Each. So that was what I was confused.
Right, so there's, we, we did not limit where the town could look for purchases of, for purposes of piggybacking. Because in, in the state of Connecticut, uh, the state leaves the procurement process to a matter of local concern. So in, in some, uh, states around the country, this type of piggybacking is not permitted as a matter of statute. But in Connecticut, the procurement process is left to the discretion of the local municipality. So the co, uh, the, the example here was, for example, if the fire department needed a specific hose, but that hose was no longer available within the state of Connecticut, but the state of Rhode Island had already gone through the bid process or, or a municipality within that state had gone through the bid, uh, the public bid process, that the town manager could, uh, as the purchasing agent, look to see where, uh, the, the specific item could be, uh, uh, obtained. And instead of going through the general public, uh, uh, bidding process to purchase it, could simply look to see what that governmental agency did, and if that governmental agency, uh, selected the lowest bidder that conformed to the process that this town generally adheres to, the town manager could simply go out and make the purchase. Uh, so what we did is added a new section that is entitled Piggyback or Awarded Competitive, uh, Competitive Bid, which means that another governmental agency has already gone through the public procurement process, and that that process is similar to the process that you, that is utilized within this community. So if the process is dissimilar, then that, then your, uh, purchasing agent would not be able to just go out and make any purchase, uh, if, if their process was not similar to the process that was used here. So the concerns, the public, uh, purchasing concerns that the public bid process is designed to protect against are met because you have another governmental agency that has gone through a process that is similar to the process that would be employed by this community. And so that's the, the net effect of what the words in that paragraph.
So the bottom line is to hasten acquisition?
It to, to help speed it up without having to go through the bidding process here in the state, particularly where an item might not be available in the state of Connecticut. Uh, that was the example I think the town manager had given, that there were just certain items that, uh, I think, and he can speak to it, but he just cannot get here without going out outside of the state, and that's why we decided not to limit it to interstate type commerce.
But with, with this language allow that vendor who was low bidder on fire hose to be used to procure turnout gear?
I would s- I, I would say no, uh, my, my interpretation would be no, because if, so the example would be, uh, if the, if the town needed to purchase turnout gear, but the, uh, the, the governmental agency, uh, regardless of whether it was inter or, uh, uh, outside the state, uh, purchased hoses, uh, that it would have to be a like for like.
Where does it say that?
It said, well, because it says, uh, that they'll have the authority to purchase supplies, materials, equipment, other commodities, or non-professional services who ha, uh, from a vendor who has been selected as the lowest bidder within the, uh, prior twelve month window by, uh, another public agency, okay?
Say the lowest bidder for that supply material, equipment, or commodity?
Well, you, we can make that addendum to be that specific, but I would say it, you'd be, if the need of the town is to buy a hose and you're looking to a governmental agency, uh, in the state of Rhode Island that just bought turnout gear, that, that doesn't, that then, that agency could not be looked to because they did not go through a public bidding process for a hose. Uh, they went through it for turnout gear.
But it says other equipment, other commodities.
This language is much too vague.
So, you know, uh, I think that if you wanna, if you wanna add that qualifying language, you can, uh, uh, through the, through this process, however, I think that it would be an absurd result to think that, uh, since this is, this specifically is saying which mirrors, and what I tried to do is to try to make the ordinance read consistently, uh, uh, with the cooperative purchasing language, uh, to say that, you know, again, I think that you, you can't read an absurd result into a statute or into an ordinance, and it would be absurd to, to suggest that if the town needs a hu- hose, that, and the, the ordinance requires you look to another agency that, that has purchased something using the public bid process that is similar to this town's, that you could then argue that that town purchased a hose, or that town purchased turnout gear, we need a hose, it's the same manufacturer, well, let's just go with it. I don't think that is what, uh, the, the, what I, I have styled as the Piggyback or Awarded Competitive Bid section is either states or as intended. If you wanna add the words, uh, that you suggested, we can qualify it, uh, uh, in the location that you stated. But I, I don't see the, I don't believe that, uh, the vagueness is there, uh, but, uh, you can definitely modify and propose that language to modify it.
Is there any public comment, Darren?
So there still would be a bid spec written, right, the same procedure?
No.
Or no?
No, uh, no, what we would do is in order to avoid having to do a, so someone, uh, some department head would say, we need X. Uh, and in order to save the town expense, it would allow your purchasing agent to look around to see whether or not, uh, X was purchased by another governmental agency within the last twelve months. That governmental agency would have to use, uh, or have to employ a similar, uh, bidding process, must have gone through it, and, uh, the award would have been given to the lowest bidder. Uh, if that, if those are met, then he can just go directly to that vendor. Uh, but, uh, in order to avoid the concerns that were raised, then, uh, qualifying the language with the words that Council, uh, Councilman suggested is, is perfectly fine.
So basically, the benefit of this is to save time or, you know, make more efficient the purchasing.
Efficiency and to save money.
Flexibility.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the flexibility of your administrative, uh, staff.
May not always work, may not even, even have it, but it, those are the issues and, that came up, and in fact, I think there was another discussion, uh, the chief is looking at, um, the, the pants and, and gear or whatever, uh, there are other departments, you know, doing the same thing at the same time. So maybe i- it's letting, uh, East Haven or West Haven or somebody do a, a bid that the town could, could piggyback on, potentially, in the future. Uh, I think it just opens us up to give us more flexibility, that's all.
And then there are like a checkpoint or process so that we know we're getting the lowest bid, right?
Right. Yeah, we have to review, make sure like, uh, uh, town attorney had said that we gotta review the process and make sure that it's gone through whether state or local, that that agents, public agency has done their due diligence and, and gone through.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying on this side, once that is done, how do we know that we are getting the lowest bid? You know?
Yeah.
Once the process is initiated, are there checkpoints?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to review, I mean, I think we'll be looking at, um, you know, other awards or bids, um, and looking at, you know, comparing.
The cost, basically, it's a cost.
Yeah, I know, that's how I'm saying, I mean, there are, in other words, like, you know, in a company, you write a purchase order, and then it goes to, you know, another person for approval, you know, are those in place? So that there's not just one person doing that purchase, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I understand the concern. The, uh, purchasing agent as defined by the ordinance, uh, you know, uh, in this, in this instance, if you wanted to make it
I mean, it protects everyone.
If you wanted to make it more strict to, uh, avoid either the concern of an impropriety or, uh,
It's not even that, it's making sure that, you know, the bid is correct, you know, the object's being purchased, you know, the bid specs are, you know, correct, you know, a bunch of different.
And, and that I understand, but at, at, at the end of the day, because you're spending taxpayer funds, you wanna, you wanna protect, again, that someone's, uh, someone's distant relative in the state of California isn't suddenly getting, you know, uh, awarded fi, you know, fifty contracts for turnout gear or hoses, right? So if, if, uh, you want to build in added layers of protection because this is not going through a, uh, a public bid process, then, uh, you know, you can look at, uh, mod, we can look to modify, uh, this section, but then I would also suggest we add similar language on the cooperative purchasing section, which has been part of your ordinance, uh, and there was no added layer of protection there. So again, I was trying not to make this overly complicated, you don't wanna overly complicate something that's being used to try to make it streamlined and more efficient, but there, there is a matter of concern that you raise, and if it is a matter, uh, that you feel you need added layers of protection, then it could be, uh, where you have more than one stakeholder, uh, signing off on the, uh, on, on the purchase with your finance director and your town manager.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I think it helps protect everyone.
Right, I think, go to your comment, the internal process wouldn't change at all.
That's what was basic, right.
Department would put the P O in, it gets approved by Michelle, gets approved by me, gets signed by Mike, so those internal steps would not deviate at all.
Yeah, that's what, you, you got it.
So, so when would you use it, when would you not use it?
It would be discretionary on the part of the town, uh, the purchasing agent. So if, uh, as the example that was given, if there was a, uh, product that was not available, uh, but that there was information that could be obtained, uh, from, uh, through a process that has already been employed within the prior year by another governmental, uh, agency, uh, then, uh, it could be employed. Uh, but, so it's, it's, it's purely, purely discretionary on the part of the purchasing agent.
Regardless of the dollar value?
Uh, there is no dollar limitation.
And then the other thing is, um, to touch on what Joe was getting at, is what would be the, I, I'm just asking, what would be the harm to have a, a phrase in there like, uh, similar to, um, like supplies, materials, you know?
You're
So that, you know, it is clear, it, cause I think it needs to be clear as day.
At the, at the end of that, the, this will ultimately be your ordinance, and you can change, you, you can ultimately change every word in the paragraph. So just because it was proposed this way doesn't mean it's, the, this sausage isn't gonna look the same way, uh, coming out as it is coming, going in.
But I was just wondering, is there, is there, um, some, is there a reason why we wouldn't wanna put that in? That's what, that's what I'm asking.
As, as I said, if you want to qualify words, you wanna add, uh, language, you can do that, uh, after the, uh, you know, through the process, uh, before the ordinance is adopted.
But there's, there's also no guarantee, so if you have twelve, a twelve month look back period, and you call, you find a government agency in another state for an item that we can't get here in Connecticut, and it's eight months ago and that price was ten dollars, they, so you're saying they have to a, honor the ten dollars that, that government agency through their bidding process paid ten months ago, or would have, the price now is fifteen?
No, it's, it's, there's no guarantee that the dollar amount is going to be identical if the cost has increased with that specific vendor. All, all this is saying is that if there's the ability to piggyback on what another public agency has done through a public bidding process, that the purchasing agent has the ability to do that. Uh, but it's not saying that the, the, the manufacturer or the vendor is a, we can't compel a third party to sell us something, uh, at a price that they sold it eleven and a half months ago.
Well, would be the point of, of piggyback, I mean, that's the whole point of, of doing it, because they've already done the bid and they've gotten a, uh, price.
So you don't know if that price is going to be less.
Oh, that's where, that's where the town should walk away, if the price isn't the same and the vendor's not gonna hold it as the same, then, you know, the town has the option of walking away.
Right.
But if the, if the vendor will say, listen, I'll give it to you at the same price that Rhode Island bought it for, then you'll be happy and you'll take it.
Well, if it's not, if it's not the same price, then it's not the same bid.
Then you don't, then you don't employ the process.
Then you don't employ the process.
Exactly.
Then you walk away.
So I got a couple of questions, you've alluded to that, so, so my first question is, and maybe I forgot all about it. Did, did the town council ask for this, or this is something that the town manager asked for?
Yeah, it was generated from administrative.
Could you give me an example of, um, cause he said that you have some things here that you couldn't buy in the last year in the state of Connecticut?
Right, well, it was, one example was the fire hose that we went through, and the chief was looking online and discovered that the state of Connecticut had hose uh, two years ago and discontinued that, they did not have anywhere in the state of Connecticut, and we were not allowed to join another municipality. Uh, he did find, and I don't know if it was Massachusetts or Rhode Island, but a neighboring state had, had the bid, but we couldn't because we didn't have this language.
But you could always find this vendor out there and send them our bid document.
Right.
Anywhere in the world.
But, but again, that was in terms of efficiency to say, if you were in, in the interest of time, saying, okay, I need hose, and there's no state to piggyback on, that means you're, he, he delayed a couple of months or a couple of weeks, I guess, to, to write, publish, and post and get that out.
So I'm going to, um, just say what I think about this, and you all know, I mean, I think, and Franny proved it again tonight, you're always better off bidding. How many times have we proved that, bidding it, uh, even against the state bid, very rarely does the state bid. I know, you know, Lisa Valenti, uh, you know, pointed out to me a couple of times that, you know, the stars were aligned and the state bid was the lower bid, but, um, I, I, I'm not quite sure that we need to reinvent the wheel, when I think that we should be bidding for things in a timely matter, and and if there's none, none of the, if we're gonna bid something that's not made in the state of Connecticut, we, if we can find somewhere in Arizona had fire hose, we could easily send them, hey, we're looking for fire hose, you know, you wanna put a bid in on it. But that's my, uh, that's my two cents on this.
I think there are times, Al, you're right, that the, uh, that, that, you know, locally, depending on the product or commodity, uh, but let's just take, you know, salt, we're not gonna bid, uh, salt on our own, we're gonna piggyback and, 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 you know, from quantities or paper or other large quantities where we can use the council of governments and, and papers. or paper, or other large quantities where we can use the council of governments, and, and paper's a huge thing, that, that, you know, we get volume and, and purchasing power within these collaboratives, uh, that we're allowed to do, um, and, you know, we'll, we'll get the best price, you know, fuel, oil, gasoline, that, you know, things of that nature that we typically buy in bulk and so forth. We, we wanna go in with a group, uh, to get a better, better pricing. But if we're picking up a, you know, a, you know, I don't know, a generator or something like that, yeah, we'll bid it out, or three trucks, we'll, yeah, we'll bid it out. Um, I think that you have to look at both, and this was just an effort to say, let, let's give the town the most flexibility, uh, in, in terms of looking at, you know, evaluating which makes sense. Going with, uh, you know, a state bid, look at this price over here, great, wow, okay, or should we just bid it out ourselves and just, you know, it's a, it's a case by case evaluation?
Well, that's the same with the state bid. If they're buying fifty trucks and North Bramford's buying one truck, guess what? State bid's gonna be a hell of a lot lower for fifty trucks than it is for the North Bramford one truck. So I, I mean, in multiples, you know, or say, say the state's buying, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand feet of hose, guess what? It's gonna be a hell of a lot cheaper than North Bramford's five thousand feet of hose.
Right.
So, I, I mean, in some ways it's good, but you gotta have restrict, constraints on it so it doesn't get abused.
I think we could still piggyback even without this.
Yeah, but not out of state.
I think we found that the state bid process has been abused, sort of, that's this kind of discretion in the purchasing office, not suggesting they would do something intentionally under it, but I think it's a level of discretion that, uh, we're all uncomfortable with. So, I mean, we're in a public hearing, we're gonna take public comment on it, but I think I know which way I'm going on this.
Is there any public comment?
Uh, Bill Seward, Fire Chief. So, um, so listening to the discussion, and a lot of it surrounded fire hose, um, but when you, when you look at the, the enhancement to the ordinance, I think it provides department heads with the flexibility that, um, if the conditions are all aligned, just like the stars, and a commodity is available through a, a larger purchasing, purchasing consortium, that gives you the best price for, I'm gonna use a terminology that's explicit to our line of work, and that is resource typing. And this is what Joe's talking about, and that's, that's an important factor here. So if I need widget X, and the company makes widget X, I'm not gonna buy something from a company that, uh, that makes midget, uh, widget Y and Z, when I need something else. So the specifications have to be to what my needs are. And I bring this, uh, up at this time. In the two thousand seventeen Citizens of Firefighters Grant Program, uh, I'm obligated, if awarded the grant, to be able to buy off of fire apparatus, fire apparatus purchasing consortiums in the United States of America. So if we get that grant, I have to be able to do that. So the, the ability to change that ordinance, I think, doesn't mean that department heads will use it every day, but it allows flexibility in purchasing something that is needed, and that still is available at the best price. So making sure that the commodity is exactly what the department head needs, and the price matches what we're looking for, I, I think is the key factor. So again, I'll reiterate, it's not something that would be employed with all purchases, but it does allow us the option and flexibility needed.
Did you just testify that, uh, you, you might get money from a grant to purchase things and be unable to under this current ordinance that we have?
So I stated that in the application, that I have to attest that if we're awarded the grant, that we have to have the ability to buy off of purchasing consortiums.
And we lack that ability today?
Uh, I don't have any knowledge of any ability in any town ordinance. And, and I'll, I'll back this up with another example. Um, before you tonight, I have a set of specifications, and, uh, not to belabor the point, but all fire equipment has to meet strict standards, NFA standards. Very few people are familiar with those standards, but that's the only thing that I can buy insofar as equipment is concerned, when it comes to firefighting apparatus, protective clothing, et cetera. Uh, East Haven Fire Department went to bid on protective clothing, that the specifications matches ours, with the exception of the color of the outside of the garments. They went, they changed from gold to black, we have black, uh, we have gold. Uh, but everything else in the specification is the same thing that we would use in the specification that you have before you tonight. Uh, but I can't buy off of their bid. That ability is not there. So therefore, you have a set of specifications that I'm going to bid on. They're buying more in quantity than I am, and that potentially could give them a better opportunity and cost savings compared to our town.
So what have we done in the last twenty years, twenty-five years, fifty years? I mean, what have we done? If, if we hadn't, if we haven't had this ordinance, or this, uh, change of ordinance, what have we done? How have we, how have we accomplished this? We had to buy something in the last fifty years.
Going out to bid, we do our own bid specs.
Well, Mike, doesn't the SCROG offer this?
Uh, they offer a lot, but, uh, when you get to, uh, public safety, I don't think they're doing any, to my knowledge, any of the public safety issues. Um, through, it's mainly schools and, and municipalities with respect to, you know, our energy and oil and gas and, and all of that stuff. Um, but, uh, not, not, not that I'm aware of in public safety. But not to say that they couldn't.
Like cost or CCM?
No, they, they, no, they've really much given it to the.
There is no option in our, in our ordinance for a deviation, one-time deviation, or, or some, something to that effect?
No.
So again, the last time we bought something that was specked out similar to the chief described, how, how do we buy it?
Went to bid, we went to bid.
So the, what's the problem? I, I'm confused what the problem is.
I don't think there is.
Oh, but no, but the way that, the way chief, the chief just described it, he needs to order, you know, certain products at a certain spec. And it almost seemed like, maybe, maybe you weren't alluding to it, but I was taking, I took it as that you can't get it unless you.
No, no, he can't get it at the price East Haven could buy it at.
Oh, great, alright.
If two towns go in together, they're gonna get it a hell of a lot cheaper than if one town does.
If East Haven's buying a hundred and we only need ten, they're gonna get a cheaper price on a hundred than we are on a ten, so if we can piggyback on there and get the same price, that's what they're looking for.
And we bid on a hundred and ten for two towns, we're gonna get it a hell of a cheaper.
Well, this isn't co-bidding, this is a piggybacking, isn't it, is it not?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not co-bidding.
Right, but when the order goes in, if it goes in for a hundred and ten, you know, and they got a bid price of a hundred, we're, we're, we're gonna piggyback on that, that hundred bid price.
Yeah, but that's not what we were talking about.
That's not what we're talking about.
This ordinance was that if, in the last ten, twelve months, we can go back twelve months, I, 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 is what I thought I heard. If someone had already bid this process out, we have the, if we, if we were to go with this ordinance change, we could use that same.
Vendor.
Vendor, that same bid.
Correct.
So that, that's a different scenario.
Right, but that, that was an interesting thing, uh, that, uh, the mayor pointed out. If, if we know that some other community is going out to bid, can we join them in the bid? Is that possible under this, uh, ordinance, or is it something we even wanna do?
I, I, you have already in the ordinance, uh, the cooperative purchasing section, which is the section for, which set provides that the purchasing agents have the authority to join with other units of government in cooperative purchasing plans on an equitable basis in large bulk purchasing when the best interest of the town would be served. Generally, that happens with fuel, oil, you know, things like that, where you can get, uh, you know, paper, things like that.
But you can do it with, with a specific municipality.
You know, uh.
Is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You could, uh, you could join with a specific, single municipality?
There is no limita- the, the, that section of the ordinance does not place a limitation on one governmental, uh, uh, agency or a number.
Okay, so what, uh, what Mayor Duddy said, uh, can already be done?
Correct.
So we can join in a bid of another municipality. What this ordinance would enable us to do is to go back to the vendor that supplied the hundred sets of turnout gear to East Haven, tell them we want ten sets of gold turnout gear, and we'd like it at the same price. And if they agreed, we would do it.
Providing.
Or we can go to them and we say, we want ten sets, give us a bid on it. Now, we happen to know you gave East Haven a hundred bucks apiece.
Well, if, if you were going to employ the bidding process, the traditional bidding process, you would not go out to a specific bid, you would publicly, you, you would do your RFP process. So otherwise, you'd be giving an unfair advantage to one vendor through a public bidding process, which you're not allowed to do. What you're doing.
So we can't solicit one vendor, even if we go out with that public notice.
Not under your, not under your current ordinance as drafted, because I think that would be a violation of the bu- the public bidding process. What, what we're, what this new section would be trying to accomplish would be, if we need, as the chief said, widget X, and whether it be East Haven, Connecticut, or whether it be, uh, you know, Albany, New York, uh, if they purchased widget X within the last twelve months, and they have similar bidding processes as this town, then you can go directly to the vendor and piggyback off of their public bid award. Uh, that's what this would, would be doing. Uh, now, what you could do by way of, if you were, uh, wanted to proceed but address the, some of the concerns, you could put limitations on this, particularly since the town council meets twice a month, uh, where the purchasing agent has the authority to do this, but only after approval of the town, of, of this body. So in other words, before they went out to piggyback, they'd have to come here and say, we have the opportunity to piggyback. Here's all the data that supports why we wanna employ this process, and this body would then vote to authorize your purchasing agent. That's an added layer that we could add into this, into the language, uh, to, uh, protect against the concerns of abuse. Uh, but then also allow the opportunity to piggyback, uh, if, if the opportunity would be in the best interest of the, of the community. So we can, we can, uh, put that added, uh, protection into this section if you wanted to proceed. But ultimately, just, you know, for, uh, all the members, uh, to, to extend, it's, if it's, uh, your first time going through this process, the ultimate decision is up to the, up to the body, whether it be the language, or whether to adopt or to reject the, the processes. No obligation to do this. This was simply put out bec- at the request of the administration because they saw opportunities in the future.
So in any case, this would be purchasing items that had already gone through the budget process?
I, I don't ness- well, I don't know if suddenly they need, you know, five hundred feet or five thousand feet of hose, whether or not you've specifically appropriated for that purchase, uh, but, you know, it might be part of the capital plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they know how much hose they have, they, you really don't need to buy hose.
We're beating up on the hose.
Without, yeah, I mean, I, well, I mean, it's all, it kinda got turned into this was about hose. Am I wrong to think that that?
It, it was a.
Was driving it?
It was, it was an example, yeah, it was an example that came up recently, and then, you know, other, other gear and other, other items. It was just, it, it, it seemed like if we were looking to.
So you had a good save with saying that, cause that was my next statement, was that I'm not comfortable with this without council approval. We meet every two weeks. If, if we have administrators that can't figure out what they need for every two weeks, then we should be looking for new administrators. So, I, I see no, you know, if we, if, if, if this has some benefit to it, you certainly would need the financial board of the town's approval, especially if it's something that's not a budgeted item.
As, as addressed earlier, the, the.
Which I'm not sure how we would do that.
Administrative procedurally, nothing's changed, in terms of the flexibility to, to go beyond what we're currently doing.
Well, there's no dollar value on this. Procedurally, we have a seventy-five hundred dollar bid. So this is different than what we do. Am I wrong to say that if we found something for a hundred thousand, that if we did nothing and this was written as was, that somebody could go buy it? I'm asking the attorney.
Yeah, I just wanna look at the top of the ordinance, cause there's also no dollar limitation specifically in your cooperative purchasing section.
But again, those would be all budgeted items, I would think.
That's where you would have to be careful, because that is a bid you're, you're, you're attaching to. That other municipality bid it, so it's already bid, so you're given authorization to buy it.
But it seems that all of.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, if there's something out there that another municipality bid for a hundred grand, and it's the best hundred thousand ever spent.
Your bid qualifications are already met.
Right. So then that would be okay?
Yeah.
That's true.
But al- but although it, um, affords some flexibility, it does take some controls off.
Right.
And we have to decide whether that controls are outweigh the, or, you know, one outweighs the other.
You don't have to do it, though.
No, but, but there's no, um, there's, when I ask the question about, you know, when do you use it, when do you don't, and it's a discretionary thing. So that, that to me is no control.
Well, I think we bring all the control back by saying it's gotta come be approved by the council.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, everybody can wait two weeks. Right? I mean, you have a problem with that, Michael?
I think we're doing it already.
Right.
Right, you've got four items on the agenda right now.
But again, it doesn't say that.
Well.
Right, it's gotta be two weeks.
Yeah, you can, you can add whatever modifying language you like, that's, I mean, this is a first, uh, first brush, first, first step.
But shouldn't, shouldn't things come to the, to the, to the, to this, um, to this forum, whereas, you know, all the procedures and, and, and policies and whatever were, were followed, and here's why we wanna go with this bid, and here's the reasons why. Because I don't, I mean, are we prepared to, to know that based on, on little information, to know information? I, I, I'm, I'm.
Well.
I, I, I mean, the way I look at it is, we're the volunteers. We're making sure the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, right? The paid, the paid town employees are the professionals. They're the experts in their specific areas. They should be coming to us and saying, we wanna do this, and here's the reasons why. Do you approve? And that, and it doesn't seem to be working like that.
Yeah, that just came back to us. Um, Al, I think we brought that up and it just came back to us, before it wasn't done like that, before the bids were awarded by the town manager. So we, we just, we put our two cents in a few months back and just asked for that, and that's why they're coming back now. So, i- it's not that it's been done all the time, it's just coming back now for council approval.
I just have one more quick question. Um, the state, they already have a consortium, consortium for purchasing, I believe. Now, how do you get notified as far as what's out there? You know, in other words, if, you know, let's say it's a, you know, a plot.
Yeah.
You know, and, I don't know, Orange just bought two plows, and we're in the market for one. Um, how do we know that they made that purchase, and how do we know that we can piggyback on it?
Well, but.
Is that something that you have to go online and look and see, you know, which purchased and?
Yeah, yeah, right, the state. Yep, you can go online, get a lot of it online, a lot of them come from email blasts and sending. and sending out, "Do you wanna join the consortium?" It's putting out a bid for paper or oil or gas or diesel and, yeah.
And then I guess I still go back to, okay, we see that, and, you know, and I know this has happened before, you look at that number, you go out to bid, you still can't, I think, find it cheaper. It's not necessarily, I don't think, the cheapest actual, you know, purchase.
All right, we killed this, I think, as much as we, as much as we could kill anything.
Yep.
So, any, any other public comment? Saying, this, you wanna just table the public hearing? You wanna close it and come back with some revised language?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, you wanna keep the public hearing open and purposes of, if you wanna, we'll give it a, another go around next month, we'll modify the language to tighten it up, to add certain protections and to add the suggestive modifying language to make it less ambiguous. And then you can take up additional public comments and then deliver it.
All right, we'll continue it till our next meeting. And see with modified language. All right, we'll close the public hearing at, uh-
No, we're not closing, we're just, we're gonna continue until February nineteenth.
February nineteenth.
Uh, twentieth.
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah. Nineteenth's a holiday and, and two weeks from tonight is the twentieth.
All right, we'll move back to the town manager's report, Connecticut DOT grant application for vans.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and we've got an opportunity to go after a transportation grant that would essentially get funding for two, replacement of the two vans that the senior center currently operates. And I've been collaborating with Lauren and her staff on putting this application together. And there's an eighty, it breaks down as an eighty-twenty split for the match, local match being twenty percent for this program. It's a federal transportation funds that come through the state of Connecticut and it also goes through the council of governments. So I think we've got a pretty good chance in terms of our application to put this forward and, you know, get two buses. One's a, one's a two thousand seven, one's a two thousand eight. Lauren's been, and Public Works, again, doing what they can to keep these on the road. But I think this would be a great opportunity to go after and see if we can get some grant funds to fund eighty percent of them. So I think, and you have the numbers in there in the grant application, I think there's six, sixty-nine thousand roughly, give or take, in terms of what the department is looking at for selection of different vans. So I think our-
You're showing a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of vehicles for twenty-six thousand dollars, more or less.
Right.
Why, why would we not want to do that?
Yeah.
So how would this work? Do you send this to your, to, to our grant writer?
Uh, no, actually, we're, we're doing in-house. It's something, you know, I evaluated and said that, you know, we consulted with Lauren and were able to pull it together. Plus, we also had some outside help from Jim Rhodes from the Council of Governments, who's their transportation person. He came and sat with us yesterday and he walked us through it and gave us some great suggestions to beef up the application. So it's pretty much, although it's in draft form, it's with a couple, you know, tweaks and a few typo corrections that we have to make, I think it's ready to go.
Good, thank you. Um, Michael, was there manhole cover ordinance or manhole cover ordinance submitted?
I, I heard about it. I, I, I have to talk with, I think that came from the police commission?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I, I-
Somebody said something about it.
Yeah, I've gotta take a look at that and I think we can get that ready for the meeting on the twentieth.
Can I just, I don't know if I have to amend the agenda. I was just curious, Mike, tell me, Andrew, Mike?
Yeah.
On the bridge project on Route eighty?
Yes.
I think maybe we should maybe, you know, talk about that a little bit for, you know, informational click, as far as, you know-
Sure.
... consent and-
Yeah, good point. And I know Kurt's here and Kurt attended the meeting, so I probably defer to Kurt with respect to the schedule and they, and again, it, it is, it was sent out to you as a notification, and I guess this, this venue would be a good time to talk about it or at the next meeting, but the governor announced that he was holding back a lot of transportation issues, and this is not one of them. This is going forward. So this is in the design phase and Kurt can, can tell you the rest, but you have the schedule there, it's, it's going forward.
Yeah.
Good evening. Yes, I attended a pre-construction meeting with DOT just prior week regarding the Route eighty bridge over, over the Farm River. The outstanding issue really was, we wanted to coordinate, get DOT to coordinate with all the affected businesses and property owners to make sure that there was no impact and that they were addressing all the concerns. We asked for that during the design phase. DOT basically put it off and said, "They'll handle it once they bid the bridge project, have contractor, have everything lined up, they'll work with all the property owners and affected businesses to make sure access to and from the businesses and around, around the construction site is addressed." At, at the meeting last week, pre-construction meeting, I brought it up to them again, reminded them that this was a commitment on DOT's part. What they said they'd like to do, they'll, they'll meet individually, they'll set up meetings, go to all the business owners before really construction starts, listen to them. They have a plan and, and just tweak it if they have to and, and make sure they coordinate everything with the property owners.
Also, I think it's important to, for them to meet with the fire, police, because this is gonna have a big effect. And when I read this email, I was confused because it said, you know, you attended the meeting and DOT reviewed the contract requirements with the contractor and DOT representatives. And then in the bottom part, it's saying, "Once the bid is awarded to the contract." So did it already award it to a contractor?
It, it's pretty close to award. There was a pre-construction meeting, there was a time element within a couple, I believe it was within a couple of weeks, they'll be doing the award. And then it kicks off, the DOT inspectors and the like, they'll be sort of in the area trying to coordinate everything at that point.
You know, yeah, it's gonna affect the business, it's gonna affect the whole town.
Absolutely, Tom.
Also, here it says there includes installation of a temporary bridge, but it doesn't say two-lane temporary.
Oh, it, it's a two-lane temporary bridge, absolutely. I mean, the big impact will be, they've got to place the temporary bridge, they're, they're gonna keep Route eighty open while they're placing the temporary bridge. There'll be some interruptions as they're making the connections one way or the other. There'll be interruptions to the property owners, primarily on the south side while they're putting a temporary bridge, but, 'cause that's what that is. They've acquired some right-of-way temporary rights from the property owners as part of the project. So, and Lieutenant Lovelace was in attendance at the meeting, so he's aware of it in terms of traffic control and the like, that has to be maintained through there. I, I said, I think the biggest thing is, and then once the temporary bridge is in, there'll be traffic closed, they'll, they'll switch everything over to the temporary bridge and then take the old bridge out and, and replace it and tie that in. It's during the, the biggest impact is during the process of setting up a temporary bridge. And then there, there's gonna be some entrances and they'll have to be controlled to some of those properties during the construction phase.
Kurt, are they, are they widening the bridge?
Um, essentially, no.
No.
They're basically-
Is there more flow capacity or what?
I think the width was pretty much the same. If it is, it's, it's a minor, minor change at, at that.
But also, this temporary bridge, I think, could handle the weight of the fire apparatus, you know, big trucks.
Yep, and it's DOT standards and, you know, in any DOT permitted vehicle we'll get to go through there. It'll be a little, little curve coming into it, so the traffic has to slow down in that, in that general neighborhood. But it'll, it'll be able to maintain-
I just think it's, I think it's imperative that, you know, notification goes out not only to the businesses but people in town, because you don't want all these vehicles just showing up there one day and boom, they're starting this project.
Yeah, I mean, the one, my thing, DOT does put advanced warning notice signs and the like. I, I, I will try to follow up, make sure just that they put anything in the paper and the like, follow up with that.
Yeah, 'cause it says you're noticed to proceed like February third.
Yeah.
But that was for the meeting.
That was the meeting, and then the actual work will start probably sometime in, I believe, mid-March, thereabouts. So we're, we're trying to get, make sure that they just, again, coordinate it with all the affected businesses, 'cause we don't want an adverse impact on that. And that came up during all, through the whole process, the public informational meetings. The DOT is very aware of it. And, and I've offered to help make sure they have addresses and make sure they-
This could even be a good opportunity maybe for EDC, you know, to reach out to some of those businesses as well, you know, as far as a conduit. And I know we don't have much control over what the state's gonna do, but-
Yeah.
You know, information, I think, to the businesses is critical.
Right, and, and getting, once our inspectors are online on board, there's a contact, and it becomes a contact person that can go out and meet with everybody. They need to meet with everybody beforehand, but if there's an issue, they have somebody to call. They can always call me and I, I can forward to DOT, but it's-
But they, I think, need to know that.
Absolutely.
So Kurt, the, the business owners in the area, will they be losing any property?
There are temporary rights pretty much over them. On, on the south side, on the south side of Route eighty, near the, where the bridge is, because that's where the temporary bridge is gonna be set in. So they, they've acquired rights over those properties.
Well, when it's finished, it should be the same as it is now.
Finished, and then they remove it and it's, it's essential location where it is right now. And it's probably, it's about a year, it's, it's over a year construction timeframe they have given them, but essentially, everything should be done by, I believe, December first is, is a timeframe, other than some final cleanup and restoration, which will carry over to the following spring.
Well, the new bridge won't be open until asphalt's down there.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that should all be done, you know, prior to December first of this year.
The temporary.
But then, again, they have to restore the properties where they have the temporary bridge out.
Right, but the, the, the new two-lane bridge, until they have asphalt running again?
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I can't tell you, it has to be done, they said it'd be done by December first of this year.
Right.
But exactly when, when it's gonna fall in that timeframe, it's gonna be somewhere closer to that, that point.
And that completion, it says March.
That's March, that's what they have, the contractual, the contractor has to do their restoration work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Next is community events and presentations. Seeing there, we'll move on, citizen statements and petitions correspondence.
Yeah, hi, Chris Kranek, forty-nine Cortland Drive. I just had a, a quick question to the, for the town's attorney, Marino. It was mentioned maybe a month ago or so that you might have office hours on a Wednesdays, and I just wanted clarification, is that open to the public? If someone in the public had an issue that they were concerned about or, or whatever, could they come in and speak with you?
Generally, I, I am here on Wednesdays, subject to my court schedule, for town business, so if someone, so I'm not generally available to the public for the public's concern. If it's a, it's, if it's a matter related to town business, then I would suggest to members of the public that they coordinate with the town manager's office to see if it's appropriate for me to be having that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But, okay.
And just one other thing, on, on the signage, I think, is a great opportunity to, to bring some continuity if we do come up with a logo on the signage to, to link it into the Parks and Rec signs. I think it would be nice to bring North Branford, Norfolk, and the town parks all have some continuity. I think it would kinda bring everything together, just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to make a statement. I was in town the other day and I was informed by a member of the community who's also a staff member in the, in the town, that the town manager informed this individual that the town council terminated the services of Attorney Ryan for labor negotiations. I have no recollection of that ever coming up to the town council. And if that is so, and somebody made that decision, why wasn't the town council informed of that? I, I, I was kinda surprised by that considering I thought that the town council was very happy with the work that Attorney Ryan did last year when he was able to get, it was actually, we were the only town in the state of Connecticut, it got zero increase in salaries in agreement with our town unions. So again, I, I just was completely surprised and taken aback when I was told that the town manager told this individual, who happens to be a staff member here in town, that the town council made that decision, and I just don't understand that. And I'm, and I'm sorry to hear it.
Well, historically, we didn't even use outside attorneys.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Historically, we didn't even use outside attorneys for negotiations.
But it appears to me that he's been doing it for a while in town.
Couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna get specifics, but I know last year, and Joe, you remember, with Kurt, with-
And I think you would've had him hired again. He wasn't on retainer or anything like that. He was hired on a per capita basis.
Yeah, I just, what, I just was surprised.
No, he wasn't terminated, he wasn't hired. That's, that's it. All right, moving on, resignations and appointments, appointment of Victor P. A. Andrew at Police Commission for Pension Committee, to the pension committee, from the Police Commission to the pension committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a statement on the record. I think we're all aware that the pension fund is, as many municipal and governmental funds, somewhat underfunded at the present time. And we are also suffering through a rather anemic period in terms of the performance of the fund, which, that was the state of affairs even before the last few days. I don't know what impact market action in the last week, we'd say, may have had on the fund. I do have some concerns that the people that we put on this committee have both the temperament and the, the judgment to look at the status of the fund, formulate recommendations to come back to the town council, because I think we should be considering making some changes in terms of the investment advisors that we have for the fund. And I think it's a rather critical juncture in terms of the performance of the fund that needs to be looked at very carefully. With that in mind, I do have some reservations about this nomination. So I would put that out there for the council's consideration and ask you to give it some thought as you vote on this nomination.
Um, if you want, we can table and discuss this further and, or-
Um, roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Marion, Ron?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Abstain.
Counselor Diamond?
No.
Counselor Flannan?
No.
Counselor Miller?
Abstain.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Abstain.
Four yeses, two no's, three abstain.
Could we have some clarification on that? Does that nomination carry?
Yeah, I believe, um, he's got a vote, but he can need five affirmative votes.
No, it's just, it's a position that has been unfilled from the Police Commission. They have one spot on it, so the motion fails, the committee will just go on. It's, they're, just don't have representation from the Police Commission, and they haven't had it. They haven't had someone in that position that has attended the meetings for a while.
I think Counselor Angelone is correct, that the motion does fail, but I really like confirmation from the town, it's really impossible.
Yeah, no, it's, what I was, it does require five, but I thought process was going more toward, I thought there was an action of the police commission to recommend the appoint- so in other words, the body, the police commission, had taken a vote-
Correct.
-and this individual, doesn't mean you have to prove it, but, but the action fails for lack of the five required votes. So the police commission could renominate or re-recommend someone, and it would be presented back to this body for further consideration.
Thank you.
Next is appointment of Sarah Quelfell to the Board of Education, from the Board of Education to the Pension Committee.
I'd like to move to table that.
Just for clarification, she is currently-
She's on.
Well, she's currently the alternate.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And then the Board of Ed, at their last meeting, they voted, and they voted because she said she would go to the, she would become the permanent position, person, and Carolyn Candelora, the motion from the Board of Ed was Sarah as the permanent, Carolyn Candelora as the alternate position. So Sarah currently is on there as the alternate until we make the change on it.
And I think that, I'll second the table for now. I think that she needs a couple of weeks to see if she's gonna be able to fulfill it.
Okay, motion table seconded, roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Just for clarification, is this the nominee's request?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
I just have a-
Is she still on as the alternate?
Well, that's, that was my-
Agenda tomorrow.
That was my question.
We didn't vote on her as an alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, she's still on it though.
Okay, so she serves that.
Well, we've got Carolyn Candelora, who has been nominated.
Has been-
We don't have that in front of us.
It came in as an email, because the Board of Ed forgot to include it with their original email, and there was an email from-
Right.
-them yesterday to the town manager, which he sent to us.
I would suggest we table that one for two weeks, do that.
Okay, so then, we'll just leave it-
If there's concern about Sarah serving-
That's, yeah.
Why wouldn't we put Carolyn on, and then if Sarah decides to serve, she comes back as the nominee for the regular-
Yeah, okay.
-member.
Works for me.
I mean, just because-
So we at least have an alternate, in the event Sarah doesn't choose to serve.
Makes sense.
Yep.
I mean, because we have a pension committee meeting next week.
Yep.
So-
Works for me.
That's why, we just wanna make sure we have someone-
Yes.
-from the Board of Education. That's, that was my concern also.
So I will nominate Carolyn Candelora.
Well, we have to amend the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
And let's just finish, appointment of Michelle Iglo, Republican, to fill the library board to replace Joan Candelara, Candelora term expired twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
So we'll do this one first, and I'll go back to see.
Roll call?
What are we doing, D?
I skipped, I skipped one, we'll go back and do Christian after.
What are we doing?
Well, he skipped-
I skipped Christian.
He inadvertently forgot C, so-
So we're on D?
We're on C.
Yes, inadvertently overlooked C, he'll go back to it.
Roll call? This is for D, Michelle.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
Okay, now C, appointment of Chrissie Ann Vogt, Democrat, to Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
And last, we have the resignation of Mary Ann Manzi, from the Democratic Registrar of Voters.
So moved.
We don't need any action.
Um, I would like to amend the agenda to add item eleven F, the appointment of Carolyn Candelora as the alternate from the Board of Education to the Pension Committee, term to expire twelve one nineteen.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Now I'd like to make the motion to appoint Carolyn Candelora as the alternate to the Pension Committee from the Board of Education, term to expire twelve one nineteen.
Second. Discussion.
I'm sorry. Do you second me?
Judge. Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
Okay, next is unfinished business, discussion in action, approval of proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash one, chapter forty, entitled fire department fees, tabled until July, so, is tabled. Review of public hearing status at fifteen ninety-nine Foxon Road.
Nothing prepared, and if the council wishes, I can remove that from the agenda for future or down the road.
The first one, they postponed it.
Bring it back in six months, I don't know, whatever the pleasure, but I'm not sure we need to carry that, unless you want to carry it, I'll remove it.
Well, the problem, when we remove something, it never comes back and we never take any action on it. So if it doesn't sit in front of our face, it will get lost.
Okay.
And, I mean, we went through all that work at some point in time, I think, we have to make the decision one way or the other. It's my personal opinion, but-
All right, next is future budget planning initiative.
I have no information for that, that's just a placeholder.
Next is review of ethics ordinance.
Um, I was not at the last town council meeting, and I would just like this to stand, I haven't had a chance to review that yet.
Sure.
So if you could just continue it, that would be great.
Next is review of Board of Education rules and procedures and policy.
Yeah, that was also something that came in late, outside, after the packet, so you should have received from the chair, Sarah.
Yeah, we didn't read that yet. So we'll continue that. Next is review of approved ordinance twenty seventeen dash four, for White Hollow, Middletown Avenue Sanitary Sewer.
Good evening, what you have before you is hopefully the final version of the proposed revisions to the White Hollow Middletown Avenue Sewer Facilities Ordinance. The existing ordinance basically restricts who can connect into the sanitary sewer line that goes down Route seventeen in Norfolk. The proposed revisions allow farm-related permitted activities to connect with the sanitary sewer with conditions and associated reviews and approvals of this, of the Blue Control Authority. It also sets a volume limitation, any individual property, what they can discharge into the sanitary sewer, and it sets it at three thousand gallons per day on an average annual basis, and it provides for a twenty-five percent surcharge for any flows in excess of that on an annual basis. It's the same item that we discussed at the, at the last town council meeting, I just added the twenty-five percent as discussed at the meeting. Everything else is the same as presented. And there is a suggested motion for your consideration. Any questions about the tool?
Does anybody wanna move the suggested motion?
I move to approve proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash four as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
Next is review and approve of RFP by ECG Group for Energy Savings Performance Contracting.
Remove the table.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion the table, seconded, discussion?
Is there any additional information missing? We have the representative from CECG here to answer any questions, I'm just trying to figure out what the concern might be.
I think the concern was more time to think about it.
More time to think about? Okay. But no additional information needed?
Not at this time. Roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Major, Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
Next is discussion in action on proposed purchasing ordinance.
Yeah.
Since that's going back for review, we'll just table it.
If you help the public here, you know, we can't deal with it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to amend the agenda to unfinished business under I, which would be the auger house and the use of- for discussion purposes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Major, Deputy Mary Angelone?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Neil?
Yes.
Counselor Zampin?
Yes.
Okay, next is the auger house use of-
Thank you. Basically, we have had discussions about the auger house, and, you know, I was just curious if there was, you know, any decisions made as far as what was going on with the auger house, you know, if, is there any?
No, just, we're, we're just, again, still looking at gathering information and trying to, concepts, again, we brought the land trust in to talk with them about potentially locating there and working on some, potentially collaborating on some grants, and see if we could get the extra funds. I know Kerry had, Kerry Duquesne had brought up a grant that Carol Zeb had done several years ago for the, for the farm, barn, associated with that, and just looking, exploring historic grants, preservation grants and other grants, farm grants, whatever we could, but the concept is still pretty loose in terms of looking at reuse. I don't, you know, I don't have a plan, I'm just looking at different ideas and concepts that might be able to save and reuse the auger house unless the council wants to go in a different direction and just, you know, take it down, I, I don't know. But it's gonna, at some point, we're gonna, you know, need to make some improvements to it and decide what, you wanna save it or invest in it and save it, or just let it go to pot, I don't know.
No, it should be used.
Did you ever talk to, is it Aegis Electric, about our five KW solar system?
Yes, yeah.
And what'd they say?
They're looking at evaluating some sites, just whatever the town wants to look at, I gave them three sites to look at, in terms of Public Works and the Ball Field and other, other places to locate one.
And then how did, how did that go? So that, they have to put that system in for us, and it's completely done? There's no cost to the town?
Uh, yeah, well, I gotta find, I gotta get more information, I wanna confirm that exactly, I wanna know that, I think it's a five K, or a three K or five K, I wanna get-
I think it was a five K that they said we, we had achieved.
Right, and so I wanna get information on that, once he's had a chance to evaluate, and I'll get together with him and confirm what the, how long it takes and where it can go.
And then, did you have any luck talking to anybody about a solar farm? Anybody that could explain, like, how, how these places make money on them and stuff?
Uh, not, not entirely, the, the water, Regional Water Authority is doing their project, and I think because they're a utility, they're a little bit different animal than municipality, but Kerry is also gathering information as well, and there's some other programs through the state called microgrids, and I think that for a municipality, it's probably what other municipalities are doing to make it work, because I understand from Bennett, Attorney Marino had filled me in in terms of some of the issues with, with solar, they have to make sure that, that you're not, that it's, that it's, it's gonna be a net revenue producer for you-
Right.
-versus the transmission, if you have to pay to put the, put the electricity back into the grid, and it doesn't make sense, but I think the microgrid, I just haven't had enough time to explore that, but there is this microgrid program that may work for municipalities, and that's how they're doing it. So we could explore that.
Okay.
But it, and again, it would be, you know, is it, is it a roof mount, ground mount, and then security issues and so forth, so.
Mike, just going quickly back to the auger house, you know, I recall when we had discussions about opening up another building, that we had mothballs, so to speak, and then by doing that, it opened up a lot of can of worms as far as, you know, building official and East Shore Health, and so on and so forth. Would that process be the same for over here?
Yeah, right, some, I mean, again, I think the ADA issues, the, the standards, right, the insurance and, and all of that have to-
Electrical.
Right, and, and, yeah.
So basically, nothing is moving forward with that.
No, it's just, it's more collaboration, we're, you know, the land trust thinks it's a great idea, I think they'd like to go in there, if it could be reused, and they could have a high-profile location and, and a great location, but again, dollars and cents, renovation costs, upgrades, you know, I'd like to see if we can purchase some, some, at least know if we're eligible for some grants, and how, how far that would carry us, because, yeah, it would be, it would be about the code upgrades, right? And, and then, you know, whether or not, you know, paint or, and a roof, and maybe you can get by to the roof for now, about three to five years from now, we're probably gonna, you know, look at, uh, yeah, I just, I think, you know, I walked in, and I did tour the inside, and it, it's not damaged or leaking or anything like that, so.
And what is it, basically, storage now?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, rec has, rec has storage in there. It's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough proposition.
It's happened, storage.
Yeah, it, you're gonna have to spend, if we wanna preserve it and protect it, we're gonna have to spend money, there's just no two ways about it. And I don't think you wanna raise it, I don't think you wanna tear it down, so I think, you know, you know, pursuing the historic preservation grant potentially to see even if it's eligible to put it on there. And then with that comes restrictions, in terms of what you can do. So it's complex, it's not, it's not a straightforward, easy thing.
Make sure when you do the, whoever's writing the, the, you know, historic preservation grant, that they're well aware that there was a world record dairy herd on that property. And world records are pretty hard to come by.
Yeah. So it's, it's a work in progress, and I certainly welcome any comment from, from So it's, it's a work in progress and I certainly welcome any comment from, from the council in terms of ideas or, you know, grant opportunities. I'll keep turning, you know...
Well, I think if we're, if we entertain the idea to use it for something, whether it's, um, land, the land trust or whatever, whatever the comment was, I think it should come to the, to the council, like, here's how much it's gonna cost us to use this. Not just come, hey, we don't wanna use it. I mean, we have to know what, what it's gonna cost the town, you know, on an ongoing basis.
Right.
You know, and versus what it costs us now, just being there. I think we'd have to know that, right?
Is it currently being used for storage? Is that what it is for what, park and rec?
Yes.
And then the outbuildings are used by Public Works?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, move into new business discussion in action. Request the hiring freeze for part-time economic development coordinator.
Yeah, this was a discussion of the, I deferred when we did the, uh, part-time van driver and cook on the last meeting to give the Economic Development Commission a chance to, um, discuss it. And they, they strongly feel that it should be a part-time, although I had suggested they're potentially going with CIRC. It really is, in their eyes, not, and I agree with them, not sustainable in terms of that rate and that process. Although you could, you could get a professional and have the services of CIRC, but they felt, uh, we'd be better served at a part-time position.
Well, I think, I, me, for one, I'd like to table it because I strongly feel that we should have, I think, more discussion and outline of, you know, what we're looking to do, I mean, as far as just hiring someone.
Was there a job description on that, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. It's a fallacy. Yeah, and it's also, I put the, I put the ordinance in, uh, you know, describing the duties in section twenty-nine six of the, of the commission. Uh, you know, in terms of, again, clearly stated in, you know, the retention in, in, in the first item, A, uh, for the commission and/or commission of economic development to promote and retain, expand existing businesses. And, and we've talked consistently about that and the commission is a volunteer organization, well, volunteer commission. And, um, you know, I think there, there, I think there'd be great benefits, uh, sort of planting the seed with an economic development coordinator, a part-time position to, um, be able to have a face of economic development and somebody to interface with, of the commission and to the public and the businesses that we serve. Uh, I think it could pay dividends down the road and I think obviously the commission feels the same way.
I'm Jan Finch, Deepwood Lane, Northford. We have been looking for someone for several years. We've been hoping that this position would be filled. Uh, every, I, there's no sense in making a comparison, but every town, town around has, uh, basically full-time economic development coordinators. We are missing out on things and, uh, the, uh, this past year, we have been a very, very active economic development commission. And I think those of you who have kept up with us, uh, know that. We started, um, having a, uh, business breakfast, January of last year. We did it again this year and we increased the number of people who came there, about, uh, thirty, I guess almost forty who came this year in January. This spring, we worked with Nelson Checcharelli and Joe DeFrancesco, put out the brochure on the farms. We noticed that the farm brochure that was, uh, being used, or not really being used, was five or six years old, went to what was basically left of the, uh, agricultural committee in town. They, they are inactive and that's basically what they told us. But the two farmers came and helped us. We put together a new brochure. I think if you have seen it, you would be very proud of it. It, uh, has... There are many people who have been very happy that we did it and that it has made an impression on many of the surrounding towns. And I think it has been, been good to recognize all the farms. There are twenty-three, uh, farms that are represented in the brochure. In August, we've been working with Poco for the last two years for a, uh, a business under the big top. And last year, with Liz's help, we put together another business under the big top where all the businesses in town are invited to all these events. And we've, we've got a good list now. It took us a while to, to get one. But all the businesses were invited. We had a speaker come from the state. And, uh, the best part of it is we had our first taste of North Branford. And some of you are great about coming to our different events. And I think you really, that was a really good one that we had. It was very, very rewarding to those who went. We all, the town council also was generous to us in allowing us to give away wine, which we did. And it just made it much more of a, uh, interesting, fun, uh, evening. So if you didn't come last year, I hope you will come this year. It's on the Thursday, uh, the very beginning of the Poco, when the, the tent is empty, nobody's down there. And it's, uh, it's worked out very nice. Last, uh, fall, we got involved in the First Impressions Program with Yukon and, uh, State of Connecticut, uh, where we went to visit a town in, uh, Oh Coventry. We went, there were seven of us, I think, from, uh, North Branford. It was, uh, Mike Lent and, um, Kerry was very, very involved, Kerry Duquesne, in this whole program. We went to visit Coventry, went around incognito, uh, answering questions in a brochure we had and filled that out. And they did a report on that. Same thing happened. People from Coventry came down to North Branford. The towns are very similar, actually, if you look at them. And, uh, they did their report. And we have that and it will, actually, I'm, I'm hoping to get the whole thing printed in the, uh, to tuck at times so that everybody will have a chance to see it. And it'll be on the, uh, website, EDC. So it's been a very busy year and it's been five of us that have been doing this. We have three vacancies on the commission. I wish that some people would come forward and like to, uh, join us. We've been working on that, but no look so far. So if you know of anybody who would like to be on the, uh, EDC, we could certainly use that help. Do you have any questions of what we've been doing or is there some reason that, uh, you know, we seem to get turned down all the time? We really could, we would like to at least try this for a year, see if we can, uh, make a difference. Have somebody available here at Town Hall without bothering Mike and Kerry and Gina, who have helped us through all this. But it's a part-time position. I don't think it's asking too much. So I hope you will look favorably.
So Mike, what's the salary range on this person? I mean, what did you?
Twenty, uh, we, we calculated, budgeted twenty-five.
It's already been budgeted, has it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, the, the problem what I, that I have with it being budgeted is that the original position was a part-time EDC coordinator and grant writer. And now we've hired the grant writer on a per diem basis, on an hourly basis, for whatever may come their way, which we don't know how much that is. So we're spending some of that money that's already been budgeted for it. This position is no different than the position that was budgeted the year before for Public Works and was never filled and never brought forward, um, to us. And in my opinion, I would much rather see Public Works get a position than EDC. That was in the budget, wasn't filled, and then was eliminated from the budget last year. So it's, this is no, to me, this is no different. To me, Public Works is much more important. Franny is not going to be here forever. We don't have anyone right under him. The position that was put in by the Democrats in the budget, not filled, and then cut by the Democrats.
Well, I, I'm, I really actually object to you making this a partisan thing.
Well, it was. I mean, that's, that's what it was.
Really, Rose, I really object to you making it partisan because...
You can object all you want, but that's the facts.
I'm doing it. The, the thing is, we, we keep coming up with, uh, needs for economic development. We have people, uh, citizens screaming for economic development as in tax relief. We have, uh, issues of, of how we go forward. We've had the Economic Development Commission do yeoman's work, uh, trying to, uh, contribute to the town. And, you know, at some point, if we continue to do nothing, it's gonna be like the Augur House and we're going to do nothing. We have to, uh, take some steps forward and...
I gotta tell you, George, rec has brought so much business to my ti, my businesses and I'm sure, you know, Al and Tom, you've seen it, right?
Well, I think there's, 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 there's something else here, though. I mean, we... I was under the impression the grant writer was this position.
Right.
And maybe that's my fault, uh, you know, maybe that's a lot of people's fault. Cause maybe we should've said, hold, hold on a second because we have this position here. I think we might've made a, made a mistake here. I, I'm not sure.
It was a dual.
You know, because we don't have that other one, where's the money gonna come from for that position?
Well, the, the four Republicans that are, were on the council last year when it was budget time, we voted against this because of the way it was being funded, where the money was coming from an account that was in a, in the red to begin with. And they took money from that account to fund this position. So we didn't agree with it. So it was partisan last year and it probably is partisan right now. But, you know, the, the facts are the facts. That the, the position for Public Works, in my mind, on one vote, is much more important than the part-time EDC person.
That position for Public Works wasn't filled because the hiring freeze was, was put on, put on.
No.
Well, I know, but the hiring freeze...
So don't blame...
No, but the hiring freeze...
Again, you, you are making it partisan.
No, but...
There was a hiring freeze that was put on.
But you could've put the, it on that the hiring freeze comes off, just like it had, it has come before the council for every one of these positions, that the hiring freeze gets lifted on there. But instead, it was cut from the budget, from the current year's budget. So it wasn't even implemented for the half a year that it was in the budget and then it was cut totally out of this year's budget. So...
Could I make some comments?
No.
Not yet. You can comment after I make mine. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna use so, Marie.
Pardon?
I'm gonna use the word so.
Well, I was gonna use it before. I forgot.
So, um, so I agree with, uh, you know, Tommy, that, that position did go through as a grant writer and an economic development, um, some kind of a stop person. But, um, you know, no disrespect to the economic development group. You guys are in, um, as I see it, you're working really hard in the wrong town. You know, we, we just don't, um, you know, we just, we don't have Route One, Route ninety-five, a railroad stop. We don't have ninety-one, Route Five. And this is all as I see it. And I've probably spent a hundred thousand dollars developing properties to every one that you guys have. So you can listen to me or you can laugh at me, but since I sit up here, you get to listen to me. And you don't have to believe me. But, you know, I've spent a lot of money. I'm spending a lot of money developing in North Branford. I can't really believe I'm borrowing that much money, but, you know, that's all for the kids. So at any rate, as I see it, as a developer and a taxpayer and a resident of the town, the only thing we can do for this town is somehow come up with a grant to run sewers out Route eighty. And then change the zone along Route eighty for all the residences that are for sale. They should be bought up and, uh, turned into business. There are, you know, a few new people that bought some properties there. And all, you talk to the businesses out there, whether it's Earl or the guy that just bought Squires, you know, boy, if sewers went down there, they'd all spend some money to make their properties worth some more. But in talking to my friends who happen to be developers, we've talked about this a lot. And there's still commercial lots for sale in Branford, Guilford, North Haven, East Haven. And it's why I can never support an economic development person in this town until we had everything else paid for that we need is because logistically, we just aren't, you know, until those towns are full, in my mind, nobody's coming here. And that's why I just can't, I just, you know, I just can't support it. I, I think you guys, you know, you work hard, you're full of energy and, and, uh, got great ideas. But we just, we, people aren't, they aren't, um, they can't come here. We don't have sewers. We don't have a railway, railway. We don't have Route One. We don't have Route Five. We don't have ninety-one. And, uh, it just, it, it, it just, you know, we are what we are. And that's just my opinion, but that's why I don't support it.
But I do think there's some areas, and, you know, you're going through it. When someone goes to build or do something with a business, the whole process, you know, how long does it take?
It's...
With permits and...
It takes a long time.
And that process, you know, turns a lot of people away. You know, I know several people that wanted to add on to buildings and do things after they started going through the five thousand, the thousand, you know, for the permits and then...
I, I, I'll agree with this and I think that we need to have a conversation with, with Kerry and planning and zoning. I know what I'm doing. I hired Bob Criscolo, who knows what he's doing, and it still took me a year. I started a year ago and now I'm, I'm this close to getting a building permit. And I know what I'm doing. I get permits all the time. So that, to me, a year is a long time before you can even think of making a dollar. And that's not you guys' fault.
Right.
That's stuff that I'm sure you guys have talked about.
Understandable.
And that's where my kinda thought process was going to is if there was a way that, you know, we can try to educate and kinda coordinate. Cause like Al said, you know, there are business owners, you know, they fix cars for a living. Now they wanna add on to their, you know, building. And all of a sudden, there's all these questions and engineers and before they even put the shovel in the ground, they're paying ten thousand dollars. And as a business owner, if you're not making money, you're, you're not surviving. And then a year and a half goes by, you know, it's frustrating. And they're gonna add to the tax rolls. And they all tell you what you can't do, but no one offers you the answer of what you can do. I went down this road several times.
I do wanna say that, that Kerry was very helpful.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Except it's the process.
It is. It's a process. It's very difficult.
The process that takes forever.
You're not a contractor, you're a layman. It's really tough.
But anyway, I appreciate you letting me go first, so.
Sure. Chris Krennic, forty-nine, Cortland Drive. First, I just wanna react a little bit to what, to what Rose was saying, that this position is not for the EDC. This position is for the town of North Branford. It's for bringing money to the Public Works, for the libraries. Economic development and the grand list is the lifeblood of what we spend, of where our money comes from. So this is not for the EDC, in my opinion. It's for the town. I think it's an important position, economic development, in our town. And to leave a position like that to a volunteer group, I think is unrealistic to expect results. We wouldn't expect results from a volunteer Public Works. It would be crazy. But yet we put this important position, the lifeblood of the town, both retention of business and new business, to a volunteer board. I was also a little surprised for the remarks that I just heard. And I wanna thank the towns in business, the, the, the... I was also a little surprised for the remarks that I just heard, and I wanna thank the towns and businesses that are in town now, Evergreen Woods, The Sportsplex. There's a lot of towns, a lot of businesses here now that wanna be here and aren't giving up on development in North Branford. Sewers along Route 80? Sure. I mean, that could be helpful. It's my understanding that sewers on Forest Road were deliberately reduced so that no businesses could be expanded in Northford, and I've heard that a number of different times. If we do expansion of sewers on Route 80, I think we have to think as a town, because Northford's a nice quaint village, and the people on Route 80's side aren't gonna say, aren't gonna like, just, "Yeah, let's put all the heavy industry on Route 80 and get the money, and keep Northford a nice quaint little town, because we're one town, and what's good for North Branford is also good for Northford." So, we'll have to think that way. But to say that this is an EDC position, or that this is a difficult budget season, we haven't had this position for 25 years. It's my understanding we've never had it in our history. But we can afford other things, $5 million for land, countless other things. This is the chicken and the egg. This is what provides the money to do the things we need to do. This is not an expenditure or a luxury. This is a necessity. That's the way I feel as an EDC member. I was the chairperson, the liaison for the Shoreline Chamber, and it was two meetings a month for two years, so I went to 50 meetings, seeing two paid economic development coordinators work for two towns, Guilford and Branford, to witness the amount of work that they did to keep their mill rate low, their town vibrant, and their businesses staying. It's a lot of work. So, and as a taxpayer, to see my taxes double in the last 17 years without an effort in economic development, I just think it's terrible. We can't have our taxes double in another 17 years. It's unsustainable. So, to keep businesses that are here and to expand businesses, we need an economic development coordinator. If you don't wanna use an economic development coordinator, come up with an idea, because that's the only one I know witnessing surrounding towns. But if there's another plan, I would love to hear it, but I cannot hear no plan, not as an EDC member, but more importantly, not as a citizen, watching my taxes go up. We cannot have no plan in the town of North Branford for increasing the grand list, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a suggested motion?
Well, if we can make the motion, I thought Anthony...
But there wasn't a second on it.
He made a motion to table, but there wasn't a second.
Right.
So, has that failed?
There's no second.
I don't know if Al's, did you second it?
I think I did.
Did Al second?
I did.
I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry.
All right, so we have a motion to table it? Any discussion?
But what's the purpose of tabling?
What are we gonna table? For how long? Are we gonna have some sort of other discussion, or?
We had a pretty lengthy discussion now.
I think we had a good discussion. We should vote on it. So, let's rescind the table.
I'll rescind.
Yeah, I'll rescind the second. Okay. Motion's been rescinded.
Okay.
We have a suggested motion.
For the purpose of going forward, we'll make the motion. If I can find the one that was put out here.
Page 107.
The North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the town manager to fill the part-time position of economic development coordinator.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, so for the discussion, so what did we move? We moved $25,000? But some of that $25,000 has to pay the grant writer as well.
If we send her something.
If we send her something. So, we have $25,000, and that's all that's budgeted. So, if the grant writer needs some money, we have to save some for her.
But this is also $25,000 to June 30th of 2018, because it's in this current year's budget.
Okay.
So, then the budget, the position would have to be funded for next year also.
Well, that would be a discussion at budget time.
At budget time. But then it goes back to the question of, if you hire someone now, are you just gonna hire them part-time until June 30th?
Yeah, you got a trial period.
Well, this position, if I read it right, I mean, I would hope that they might also be able to write a grant. We're not disallowing that, right?
Right, absolutely.
Plus, it could be a good trial period to see how that would work out.
I read information from the, in the previous minutes, that at 19 hours, something I read that said at 19 hours, you didn't get anyone, because the physician really needs 25 hours or so. But then we get into the whole benefit.
Right.
So, did you already try advertising at one time at 19 and didn't get anyone?
No, no, we did. It was just, the caliber of candidates was not great.
Right, okay. Because it's too few hours, and they don't wanna work part-time and...
It's either, yeah, it's still gonna be a tough fill.
But benefits are $32,000 per town employee. Is that correct, Anthony?
Very dark loads.
Okay. So, are we paying the person, or are we paying their benefits? Or are we staying under benefits?
No, we're staying under.
Staying under.
Okay. Staying under, yeah. And it's just a hit or miss, and obviously, the EDC has collaborated and is talking about trying to obviously hit every resource we have in person. We might know that in terms of a network to advertise this time around, to broaden and, you know, turn over every rock, because it's gonna be hard. It's gonna be hard, quite, you know, to find a part-time person at $25,000 now.
Mike, it reads in here, I believe it's you saying, "I suggested an option. You might be using the services of CERC."
Yeah, that was...
Can you refresh my...
Yeah, previously meeting, we had held off, or I had suggested that one of the options outside of, instead of hiring a part-time person, would potentially use the services of CERC, but that is a higher rate, and is really not sustainable at 60 hours.
Sixty-some dollars an hour.
An hour. And the commission at EDC said, "Yeah, that's..."
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they didn't wanna go that route.
The other towns' EDC coordinator, are they full-time?
From Guilford and Branford, Guilford.
They're much different towns.
No, no, I know. I was just curious if they were part-time, if possibly split.
You need them. They need them full-time.
But I mean, you know, I saw interesting things, and I think Council Rose did it, where he had maps of the land available for economic development in our town, and, you know, quite a bit of research. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of new land to develop, but there are businesses and, you know, different, you know, I get it, there's different things to look at.
Mr. Mayor, would you allow a comment on the public? I know it's not part of it, but I mean, I think I have something that might help, because if we wait till better comments and you vote, then it defaults on developers.
Sure, I'll pull a lot of you.
Al brought a fact about licensing and permitting fees. Sure, they're high. Take a small chunk whenever anybody comes, divert it to the economic development slush fund. Like he says, you gotta have something. You just can't, I think, like they've said, "Well, the business just likes to see him knocking on their door once in a while." So, yet, even when you're thinking about fixing the permitting fees, or if you had somebody that would answer the phone and not reach Michael, or somebody that's really diverted. And like he was saying, if you just had somebody part-time that could take the call, say, "Yeah, I'd like to do something in North Branford," then they could go to the various departments, say, "Hey, look, I got a guy that wants to do this." But when you just have nothing, there is no incentive for a business to come to town, because they don't have one point of contact, even if it's part-time. I'm sure they wouldn't be too sad to hear, "Well, the coordinator's not here right now, but if you want," you know. Just a false face or something to start the process. We can't just ignore economic development. And it's not tons of money, and I know we're hurting for money, but I think sometimes the dollars you spend have to be spent wisely, and I don't see how this isn't wisely. These people are working hard for nothing. And like I brought out last time, we used to meet the Agriculture Commission the same night, and they'd be gone home five months. The old Economic Development Commission would be gone, because they couldn't get a quorum. You're getting qualms, they're moving forward. So, I think in the fee schedule, somehow you could work out a few bucks out of that, could go towards the economic development, but also, they'd have a point of contact out. Al, you know who to come to talk to. Not everybody else will. And Michael and Kerry and everybody there, probably stretched pretty thin. So, if they, like, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, there's a point of contact here for a couple hours, that person could just fill out like a form, say, "What do you want? How do you wanna do it?" And then, even if they had to wait till next week, at least there'd be some movement. They wouldn't be talking to the wall, because we can do that constantly in this town. We're really good at that. We need to open ears and open processes. I mean, it's dollar spent, but it's more dollars lost if we don't do something. So, you have to weigh. And you're right, Al. I've been screaming for 20 years like you have. This mountain is the best, worst thing that ever happened to us. It makes our town the letter L. No sewers, no highway, you got it, you know, no water. True, but guess what? We have to live with it, and we have to work around it. Literally, I could, I can go to North Branford, the other side of North Branford, by going through Durham and North Guilford quicker than I go this way sometimes. But you know what? That's our nemesis. Let's not ignore it. Let's somehow make it work. And we just gotta keep trying. You can't give up on the town, and you can't give up on these people, really. They need to, they need to feel satisfied for what they're trying to do. And like they say, it's sort of like, you know, I would have a shovel, and you'd have an excavator, and I'm trying to do the same job you are, but you can afford the excavator, and all I can afford is a shovel. Guess what? I'm still gonna use the shovel. I'm not gonna throw it away and say, "The heck, why did I not do it?" You still gotta move forward. And I think you've gotta give them the funds to try it. And like I say, somehow administrative fees, just move a little bit over to that side to cover the cost. You might be able to cover the position with the fee schedule. If we don't try it, we'll never know. So, I mean, this is a hard vote. It's not an easy vote, but I think it's a very necessary vote to move forward somehow, some way. Thank you.
Can I have your name, Nat, just please?
Yes, Cliff Potter, Milliken Avenue, number three.
All right, any further discussion? There's money put away for this?
Yes.
Well, there's, yeah, it's only good until June 30th, and then we would have to discuss again when we do the budget in April, if we want to move forward with it. If we don't, why would you hire someone for just a couple months? I would rather see it that we don't do anything now, discuss it at budget time, and if it goes back into the budget, you can start the process then. Well, it doesn't make sense to hire someone, to go through the process and everything. You get someone, you go through the interviews. It's already February. You advertise. It might be April at the earliest that they can start. They could only be on for three months, and then if it doesn't, if the position doesn't get funded again, they're out. So, it would make more sense that we discuss it in budget, and you know ahead of time, you can advertise so that they can start in July, if it goes forward.
Anthony, there's somewhere in here, I don't wanna try and look for it again, or was it in here?
She said if it goes into the budget, so she's referring.
Is that set in stone? It looks like we only lose $300,000 or $295 from the state this year, or is that...
That's next year.
I mean, next year's budget, which is what we're talking about. So, that's it, counting education and everything?
Especially if you're told, that's the real number, yes, for next year.
So, we're $300,000 in the hole to start?
That's correct.
Oh, there it was. It was right in front of me.
I like what they're doing. I like what they're doing, and I think they would have the opportunity. But maybe not right now. I'm concerned about Franny, too. You're looking for a person, too, right, Fran? Maybe we should just wait until the budget process and do it then? Try to do it then? See if it goes through?
Why don't we just call a question? We've got a motion on the floor. Let's vote it, and whichever way it goes, it goes.
We'll call.
Mayor Nudi?
No.
Deputy Mayor Angeline?
No.
Councilor Candor?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
No.
Councilor Bigley Ong?
I'm gonna abstain.
Councilors in Panama?
Yes.
Four yeses, four noes.
Does it pass?
What was it? Count again, please.
Four yeses, four noes.
An abstention?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't care?
It doesn't pass.
Our next item is review and approve grant application and contingency appropriation for North Branford Police Department body cameras.
Yeah, you heard from Lieutenant Lovelace last meeting, and this is a reimbursement program. Anthony has prepared a motion in terms of the appropriation for that.
May it be resolved that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from ZER for contingency account number 101-4703, 76000, and transfer it to the appropriate account as soon as possible for the following purposes: police body cameras, to be reimbursed, the amount $33,000.
All right, I'll make a second to get it on the floor for discussion. Is my recollection correct that that grant is for one year, and then it diminishes or disappears a year or two, but we've gotta make a multi-year commitment?
Was this discussed at the last meeting? Because I need more information, because I can't tell from the...
Yeah, it's twelve and so.
The way I understood it, it was for five years.
Yeah.
Is our commitment, was the grant for five years?
I believe it was for five years.
Yeah, it was a multi-year grant. It was the storage, I believe.
It's thirty, the grant is thirty-something thousand, and then it's...
It was costing us fifteen for five years.
Fifteen, five, second, third, fourth, and fifth year. We can get out of it at any time we want. We just can't get into it with another company.
Okay, that's right. Good recollection. Thank you.
And does that include the storage of the...
Yeah, that's it in a nutshell.
The fifteen, five, for two, years two through five?
Yes.
Is our cost?
Yes.
Thank you.
And is it, they replace the equipment?
I think this, after the second year, there was a replacement time.
At no cost?
Right.
They just swap out?
If there's damage, yeah. They send you one out?
Specifically asked if equipment is damaged or just breaks. It's kind of like on warranty or something. They come in and replace the defective unit with a new one.
Yep.
And then at the end of five years, it's all on us?
Right, then that's a new contract or whatever, whatever you choose to do.
So, Joe, I will agree with you on questioning it, because for all these years, we were all always told, oh, the cost of it, you know, the cost of the storage is what breaks the bank. But the way this was explained to us, it's like what we just said it is. So, it's almost one of these things that sounds too good to be true. Well, they're using cloud storage now, and that's what changed the costs so dramatically. That's the huge difference, Al.
Okay.
I'm sure there's gonna be a contract, and if we approve it, I mean, Mr. Moreno's gonna have to go through the contract, I understand, just fine. And secondly, they don't have to store a lot. It revolves around through. They only have... It revolves around through, they only have to pull off certain sections that.
Something they have to say.
That is requested to be saved.
The grant is thirty-two, whatever, and we have to outlay it, and then we get refunded, the full amount.
Okay.
Now, we had a motion and a second discussion and roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angelloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candor?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Farnum?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Wheel?
Yes.
Okay, next is Budget Workshop Schedule 2018.
Yeah, this is the time of year when you typically take a look at that and tell me if you want to change the dates or move the various departments around. You decide to flip-flop the order, if you'd like, in terms of Library or Board of Education or Public Works, what typically those, those six that we focus on. Certainly you can add to that, but it's just a, it's a template to, to look at, it's the same one we use every year to, to get through the budget process. You have tweaked it in the past, and you want to flip-flop around police or fire or the order.
I think on, uh, the order for March 27th, I think we did better with Board of Ed as the last, uh, in terms of the amount of time people took. Franny at least deserves to be a little earlier in the schedule.
Consensus is go with it?
Or, well, George had suggested moving Board of Education to the.
Right, just flop it.
Flip, flip, put him to the end, put him, put him third.
Would that change the consensus is?
Okay.
Everybody goes with it.
Just want to, I guess a simple motion to approve, approve that, and we'll.
Move to approve.
Would that change?
We're going to just do it.
Second.
Well, it's, it's what he, Mike just asked for, um, just asked for.
All right, you want a motion?
Yeah, just a simple motion to approve. So George and I think Al's second.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angelloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candor?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Wheel?
Yes.
Councilors in Panama?
Next is review of bid specifications for number 12, bid number 12, 2017, 2018 rental of portable toilets.
So I read the bid proposal for the portable toilets with great interest, since I once had a contractor who had a portable toilet at my facility and then left it, at my home, and then left it for three and a half weeks to my distinct pleasure, so I didn't have to go inside every time I wanted to use it. I read the, uh, the bid proposal, and it specified a lot, and then I got to the, the last page, and it asked for portable toilet locations, and then it talked about one deluxe unit, and a deluxe unit wasn't specified within the bid proposal. So I have no idea what constitutes a deluxe unit as opposed to something other than a deluxe unit, although the handicap units are specified. So I think that at, at the very least needs to be.
Well, we have, we have our, we have our portable toilet specialist Lawrence here, so maybe she can address it.
I, I realize that.
Sure, you could piggyback.
That has an automatic, that has an automatic wipe or what?
No, deluxe is, it's just a term that's used, it's regular, it's a regular unit versus a handicap unit.
Okay.
Well, it said deluxe, I want to know what I'm getting here.
There's nothing deluxe about it. Hopefully it's got a sanitizer.
I hope that answered your question, George.
I got it now.
All right. I don't think so.
Do we need anything? I might, I might. Uh, just a simple motion to.
George, you want to make the motion on that?
I certainly do. It's well written.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I make a motion that bid, the specifications used for the rental of portable toilets in bid number 12, 2017, 18, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angelloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candor?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Farnum?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Wheel?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, move on to review of bid specifications for NFPA 1971 Structural Firefighting Protective Coat and Pants. So I would personally like to defer to the chief and say, you've read this, everything's good?
Yes, so for edification purposes, I'm the one that assembled the bid specification, correct?
Oh, perfect.
Has the town attorney reviewed this already?
Has the town attorney reviewed it? Uh, my job was to forward it to the town manager.
I've, I reviewed it when I reviewed the, the packet for the meeting, but I wasn't asked specifically to review it and report back, but I have reviewed it and I find it in appropriate form, but I was not asked to report to any.
Thank you.
I, I don't know of any other time in which the town attorney was asked to specifically review fire department bids, if there's concern about the legal right to specify. This is the standard boilerplate that most fire chiefs in the U.S. use to specify NFPA 1971 turnout gear.
Chief, you mentioned the color, East Haven is different than North Branford. Is there any specific reason?
Yes, I did. This was a big discussion a couple years ago with our Board of Fire Commissioners. The general consensus of the membership was they wanted to switch to black turnout gear. And I'll tell you why in a second. We've historically had dark tan to gold depending upon the, the lot of material, because black is actually non-black material, which is dyed black. The, the primary difference from a fire protection standpoint is with black turnout gear, it's very easy to see heat exposure by temperature change and color change on PPE versus you really can't see it on tan or gold gear.
So why, why are we sticking with tan or gold?
Uh, I take my direction from the Board of Fire Commissioners, and when we bought our largest allotment of turnout gear, uh, I was directed to buy tan slash gold.
So how about the new chairman, is he in favor of looking?
Uh, the chairperson was, at the time, in that seat. I'm not throwing him under the bus.
Is, is it a problem, or is it confusing to have two different colors at any given time?
From my perspective, as innocent commander, my answer would be no.
Okay, I was just curious, like, in, in a fire, would that somehow cause some?
In, in a fire, there's no visibility.
My thinking was if we team up with East Haven, can we send any more money per outfit?
So off the record, let me just tell you about the pricing, and this is what spurs that earlier discussion at this group. So a particular manufacturer of turnout gear has a qualified vendor in a particular state. So if I want to buy type A, I can only go to distributor A. I can't go to distributor A and B and say, give me a price on this gear, because distributor B can't sell that gear. They're prohibited by the manufacturer. So with a specification similar to this, there is a vendor in, in the Queens, down in New York City, that handle New York City Fire Department and many, many other fire departments in the Northeast. So they buy volumes. The vendor for a specific, as this specification is written, in Connecticut, doesn't sell that many. So, by the way, guess who makes the gear? Honeywell. Guess what's in our town? A Honeywell factory. So could I say that the vendor that handles the Honeywell product in Connecticut could charge you more than what the vendor in another state in a particular borough would charge? But they're going to make their profit, right? So they don't sell by volume, and this other vendor sells by volume. So that's where you're going to get the best cost for the exact same item.
Do you have any idea what we're talking in price?
I would be lying if I told you an exact amount. I have a ballpark figure in my mind, but I, I don't want to say that.
We put turnout gear, but it was like ten, ten, eight or eight.
For, for a turnout camp, pant, and coat, it's ballpark, general discussion purposes only, price is, uh, twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred dollars per individual, and it's individual sized.
So, I don't, I don't want to put the chairman on the spot now, but is there any consideration to go into black?
Well, the only reason that we decided was, we asked some of the members also, and it's always been the tan, since the fire department started, so that's what we get.
But if we could see.
We didn't know we were going to go with somebody else that was going with black, you know, that's why we did it. That was the only reason we did it. I mean, as far as wearability, it's, it's only just such, such a life on it that when life shows that it's over, you have to buy new. I mean, black, tan, whichever, so.
Well, let, let me just ask this. If I understood correctly, what you said is that you're doing tan because the membership preferred it, whereas I thought I heard the chief say that black constituted a safety benefit.
A safety benefit from the visualization of seeing heat exposure.
That's all visual, that's, it's not safety, you're both safe and wise. It's, it's if he wants to look at it and say, okay, this was heated more than the other, he might be able to see it. Not guaranteed, but he might.
As, as a manager, that's, that's a benefit, is it not?
It is a benefit.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that's a different level.
Want to change a hundred, uh, uh, sets of gear now to black?
Well, no, you just change everything that comes through.
That's why I asked the question, if you could have both colored.
Yeah.
It's going to get, it could, it's possible, but it's going to get confusing, because we have certain helmets, one colored, to know who can get inside a building, who cannot go in a building, I mean.
Is it manageable, chief?
Is it manageable? Uh, I'll ask my deputy chief.
No, you can't, you can't.
I, I just, I, I just don't know that if it's worth it, pursuing it, um, the cost? I mean.
Unless you get prices both ways. The, 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 the cost of color difference is negligible to zero.
No, I mean the cost of buying in volume versus buying, you know, ten or, or 12 sets.
Well, I, I can tell you that this year I can probably afford to buy eight to 10 sets with, what I'm going to have left over in the budget.
But how?
But, but now, you got to realize this, I, I have a tracking system. So as any good manager would have, or administrator, we're forecasting down the road at what time, uh, are we going to come to a critical point? And it's in about four to five years. Because if you remember, uh, back seven or eight years, we bought about 60 to 70 sets of gear, because they were all expiring at similar times. Gear can only be used 10 years or less. That includes helmet, gloves, coat, pants, hood, and boots. That's the NFPA standard, no ins, ifs, or buts. So down the road, in a very short period of time, we're going to be bumping up the number of sets per year that we need to replace.
So it's foolish to stay with tan if you could go with black at a cheaper price?
I, ultimately, I don't make that decision.
So Anthony, can you get us, um, prices?
So yeah, we, we can't get prices, we have to go to bid.
As you, as you write the bid, you put bid alternates.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because right now, this bid doesn't allow it.
You have one bid coming out of East Haven, right?
The bid has already been awarded.
What was that, per set?
Black, uh, I, I can't tell.
Can we find out for our next meeting?
I need to go to bid really quick. It takes almost two months.
Can we find out before our next meeting?
Two months to run through this process, and probably three months to have it made.
So can you get it to Michael tomorrow?
I can get the East Haven price quote probably tomorrow.
But can we adjust, because this bid is just for tan, but can we do an add alternate?
I, I can, I can easily change the bid with one, one word.
Yeah, I mean, just so that we have the option to look at it, to see if, if, if black and tan doesn't make a different, yeah.
Yeah, if, if, if you get, if you get East Haven.
That was back to the earlier discussion, that got tabled.
Right, which is coming back to us at the next meeting, which is.
So, so if you get, you know what, you paid for tan last year here, right? Do we buy?
Pretty closely.
So, and we see what?
Last couple of years.
What East Haven paid this year?
Mm-hmm.
We'll, we'll have an idea of, of a volume, more of a volume than, than we're going to purchase.
I'm, I'm limited on what I can buy this year.
Right.
I mean, if they bought 50 sets, you know, the price is going to be, no matter black or tan, it's going to be much cheaper, considering we're only buying heat.
Right, so we're not getting into the volume thing this time anyways, right?
We don't have the money.
Right, so we just got to determine whether they're going to go black or, or tan, right?
And, and when we put a bid out, we can extend that bid, because typically in our town, bids can be renewed up for three years.
Michael, can we buy under East Haven's bid if they have an awarded bid?
We have to pass the piggyback.
That's the piggyback order.
Right.
See, now, we've got a full circle.
Yeah, right, right.
So, yeah, if you could, um, if Michael could pull out what we spent last year or the year before, and see what East Haven's, um, piggyback price would be, and we could compare it, if it's negligible, that's one thing, if it's a plus, maybe look at it, we could talk about it at our next meeting.
It's, keep in mind, it's two different manufacturers.
Can you live with East Haven's manufacturer?
Yeah, because that's what this bid is predicated upon.
Now, the manufacturer used last year for our uniforms, it's not the same manufacturer?
Uh, it's not the same bid.
Okay.
It's a little different, um, and this, you'll find, is a little less expensive than what we went with previously. Because we're looking at East Haven and volume, and we're looking at the working relationship between Honeywell Corporation and where they're located.
So what do we need to do for you tonight?
Well, I, I.
I'm totally confused.
Yeah, me, me too, because I've been chief here since 2005, and never have I had to bring specifications for equipment before the town council. They always went to the Board of Fire Commissioners, to the town manager, publicly advertised and awarded.
Well, we just asked for that a few months back, just to, you know, get more of a hands-on as to what we're buying and what we're purchasing, so. You could blame us for that.
So, I need some direction.
I, I, I think the bid needs to have the add alternate in, because right now, it's all gold.
Yes.
And so, I think we need to have the add alternate in there.
And then send it out.
Right, but, yeah, and can't that just be done right now through the motion, or?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you, you know where to drop it in to expect.
Yeah, accept the bid, and the verbiage is stroke at a keyboard.
But then, but then, the, the issue becomes, because, you know, we can't, if he does the bid tomorrow to put it out, we can't piggyback on East Haven's because we didn't pass.
Oh, right.
There'll be no purpose to it at that point.
Right.
Right, so we, there's no benefit. I mean, we can get the add alternate so that we have the pricing on it, but it's not going to give us the latitude to piggyback on East Haven's. That we would have to wait for two weeks when we get the language back and take care of it all at once.
I, I emailed the modified language to the Town Manager, so he has that modified language, but you would, that will come back for the council in two weeks.
Correct.
Uh, and then, uh, depending upon the action of the body at that point, then you would have to wait for that ordinance going to effect, right? So it's not even to say in two weeks.
What is it, twenty-one days after?
Publication. So, uh, you know, you're looking at a window of time, uh, before you could potentially piggyback, but even with that window, depending upon how quickly you turn around, this, unless this, if E, if East Haven just went out on their bid and you think you can.
They, they just, they, they awarded the bid, and they're, I'm gonna guess that they're in the process of scheduling measurement dates right now.
So, i- is, is it your belief that through this bid process, just the timing of it may match up such that the town would get a benefit while not a real piggyback? It would be kind of a, from the same vendor at bulk purchase?
Right.
So, in theory, it's a piggy.
By, by the time, by the time the bid comes back, gets reviewed and, and awarded, your piggyback might, it'll probably already be in effect.
Correct.
So, it's six of one, half dozen of the other.
Correct.
I, I thought we talked about two different things at the beginning of this meeting.
What do you mean?
I thought we were, we had the option already with our ordinance where we can, um, bulk buy with people.
That's cooperative purchase.
Right. So, I guess the point I'm making, if East Haven's order is in, what benefit from volume are we gonna gain? We're more, what we're talking about more is a cooperative purchase to get a bulk price, not a piggyback, right?
Except the, the concept of a cooperative purchase is where, through a consortium, you're buying something and everyone's getting a piece of that. That's the cooperative purchase. The, the concept, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that since their order is now in, if we go quick enough, we may be getting a collateral benefit from the amount that they're purchasing where the vendor would extend a discount because it just happens to be the timing works out.
Okay.
It's not being done in concert.
Okay.
Second.
Yes, fair.
So would it be feasible to simultaneously?
Well, I don't see why you don't proceed on two parallels. If the council ultimately adopts the piggyback, and then you could abandon this, you abandon it. But if not, you're saying time is of the essence.
Yeah, I mean, we can always go to bid and not award bid.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the bid specs for NFPA nineteen seventy-one structural firefighting protective coat and pants with the addition of putting an add alternate in the bid specs for black uniforms, or whatever you want to call it, gear.
Second. We got a couple of seconds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anthony, second then.
We have a third.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Candelar?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Big Neil?
Yes.
Council Zedman?
Yes.
Our next is review of, um, bid specifications for public works vehicles. We gotta rush this through because Franny has a long night tomorrow night.
Well, it starts in the afternoon, or the morning.
Then it goes straight to the next morning. Anything you want to add to that, Fran? Anything on the trucks?
Yeah, I reviewed it all.
Nothing was omitted.
So in this bid, is specific vehicles going to be delineated, or is it just?
They are.
Oh, the right, sorry, the, the rest of this is. No, I was looking at, on the tablet and not the. Not the addendum where things were looked at, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid specs, bid number eleven dash two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, purchase of vehicles for public works.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Candelar?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Big Neil?
Yes.
Council Zedman?
Yes.
Our next item is, uh, review of bid specifications for auditing services. Anything on that, Anthony, we should be concerned about?
Uh, negative, it's just the standard practice we do for five-year windows, three-year contract with two single-year extensions. The firm of Seward and Monley is completing their fifth and final year. It'll be before your, your next meeting to go over the audit results from the seventeen fiscal year, but, uh, that again was their fifth and final year, so this is the time to go back out to, uh, change auditors or test the waters.
So do you feel that that timeframe is correct, and we should stay with it?
Yes. Yeah. There are, there are, um, if you turn back the clock about ten, fifteen years ago, a lot of towns had the same auditors for ten, twenty, twenty years, and more and more are following this model we've been doing for the last twenty-five years here. Three-year contracts with two single-year extensions, almost every time, I think, albeit one time, we didn't follow all five years, uh, the firm was out of business or something, but typically that five-year window.
When, like, does this firm do the Board of Ed too?
Yes, sir. The whole town audit, the Board of Ed, R books, the APO one, the State and Single Federal Audit Act, all that stuff.
Anthony, just real quick, how many firms are there that do this and could actually?
Oh, there's probably about a dozen.
Is there?
Yeah, there's probably about a dozen that, that will, that will do it. Some of the larger ones and some smaller ones, but there's probably a dozen altogether.
Just curious, thank you.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve the bid specs for request for proposal number one, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, for certified public accounting auditing services. Fiscal years ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second.
Just one more question, Anthony. So I understand that we didn't want to do it for twenty years, but is three years the right number?
Yeah, because there's, there's a learning curve as well. When you typically change auditors, by the time they get used to your practices and know what, what function Hal plays versus what Rose plays, and so on and so forth, it takes them a while to get up to speed. Takes them at least one or two years to get that, all, all the players down. And sometimes they even change their staff, because at times it's, they'll have the same manager, but they'll bring new rookies in place, if you will, by the time they get used to it and everything else. So three to, three years is the two-year option typically works really well, of course.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Candelar?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Big Neil?
Yes.
Council Zedman?
Yes.
Next is discussion of 401A retirement plan.
Yeah, I had asked for that to be put back on. We had that discussion briefly, I don't even know if you were here, Joe, we talked about that. My, my, my understanding is it's like another layer of protection, um, watching over and educating people that already have the 401Ks.
Like a fiscal watchdog.
You're talking about the fiduciary that was recommended, I thought we adopted that.
We did.
Yeah, we did. I was just, uh, was, uh, we do the same thing at businesses, and I don't have that other layer of.
If you've got a retirement plan in your business, I suspect this year you probably do have the additional fiduciary in that, in the plan. I, I'm just guessing that, most companies are doing that now. It's really a protection for the company, this is a protection for the town. Because if somebody doesn't like the way their, their investments go, they're gonna come after the town.
So, to play, so again, Marie, to, to, to play the devil's advocate, but now, the, you, you, you could, you could be adding to the liability, because now the towns, we're paying this person the seventy-five-hundred or whatever, and they're our so-called expert. So, do we have more liability because it's like, oh, hey, I went to your guy and I lost my shirt? Where if we left it totally up to the employee, how, how, how is it the town's fault?
I think the question, you'd be the sponsor of the plan, and basically, the, the, the theory here is that the, most of us as investors into our 401Ks are not educated enough to be making wise investment choices. So what the plans provide are, and, and generally, I know, for example, at my firm, we have a third party like what you've now adopted, although it was the last meeting with the meeting, to provide that level of expertise, and because also we've kind of identified at this, the employer level, the employer doesn't have the, the requisite level of expertise to adequately advise in, uh, employees on the platforms within which they should be invested. So, without the third party, you're absolutely exposed for those claims. But with the third party, there's that layer, uh, and the way that we amended the agreement before it was ultimately, uh, adopted, was to, uh, basically provide the town with that level of indemnification that the town would require. So I do think it's best practices to have it. And, uh, again, I, I've been with my firm for over twenty years, I don't, I don't think we've never not had it.
Well, I mean, but the plan itself, the plan that this 401's in, they do provide that information in most cases. I, I don't know of one that doesn't. That, I don't, I wouldn't expect my employer, nor my town, to do it, but the plan they've, they've, they've allowed me to partake in does, does provide that, that service. And as it was explained last meeting from Anthony, it wasn't just that, it was also to, uh, review the funds that were available, if I remember correctly. You're a hundred percent correct. And also the fee structure. Right. What fees is ICMA charging us, you know, they've already identified that as, as a potential area of significant savings. It's enough to pay for their own fee as well. So, it's the alignment of, of the, the plan options. ICMA is gonna steer you into their own vehicles. This plan can suggest that, okay, I want to offer a different vehicle. ICMA will buy into that, add that vehicle for other people to invest in. The, the guidance that the attorney mentioned as far as, you know, how do we expect layperson to be able to plan for their future in this new environment where the 401K is their sole pension? When they get to be sixty-five, they could have two dollars to their name. And there are, there is litigation that comes back and sues the employer for not educating my, my father well enough to know his, his options and his choices. So, that's what we're trying to minimize, and as, as Council Fawnin mentioned, we're, we're trying to mitigate the town's risk to say, "Okay, we've gone that extra step and said, 'Here's a chance to come get education.' You may not, you may not follow the education, but it's out there." So, we've gone above and beyond, and your ICMA comes in quarterly, they'll meet with you and say, "Okay, let's review your, your account, Tom, I think you're doing this, doing that." People don't take advantage of it. Again, because he's kind of like, almost like biased, if you will, a little bit. So let's have this third independent person look at it and say, "This is what we should be offering at this fee structure, and is it the best for our employees?" So that, that's what we're trying to accomplish. Minimize the town's risk, increase the performance, everybody wins. So I understood it correctly, because I, I remember what you said the last meeting. You did, you did.
Okay, okay, that's all, thank you.
All right, moving on, discussion of town website.
Uh, I think that also was from Council Candelar.
Oh, yeah, you know, I have. I think it was actually, because I actually talked to him about that too. It was when, um, when we first put, so with the new state law, they put the education contracts on, and when it first went on, and I know you sent it out, you were gonna change it, and you did. Because, but when Anthony and I talked about it and we asked to put it back on, it was pretty damn hard to find. When the Board of Ed's contracts were under miscellaneous, you know, I mean, so, so what I was saying was, what I was thinking is, you know what, that's big, it's a lot of money, and people ought to be able to find it. But, you know, thanks to Rose Angeloni, she, uh, showed me where it was and how it's right on the front page, and so.
Everybody wants to know.
I could almost get that.
No one's happy where they are on the website, they only be on the front page, tax must be on the front page. There's only so much you put on the front page, otherwise it's all too cluttered. So we did put a separate line for Board of Ed slash town documents.
And I think it, it.
All the contracts are out there.
The state of Connecticut felt it was important enough to make a law.
Right.
That said, you know what, these contracts, people in town ought to be able to find these and see them.
Right.
They ought to be able to find them and see them. And I, I think where it is now, at least for me, I don't know if the rest of you looked at it, and. You can find it and see it.
Yeah, as much as you can get, and that, it's documents, because it also brings you to other things out there as well. Mike's reports are out there, his weekly reports, there is the monthly financial report is out there as well.
You can put his reports on the back, yeah. Put that in miscellaneous.
I gotta spice those up.
All right, but that was my question, I don't know if anyone else had any other.
Yeah, that was basically, yeah, thank you.
Next is citizen statements and petitions.
First of all, I want to apologize for asking you to, to change the agenda tonight, but I appreciate the fact that, you know, I was hoping one of you would think about maybe the fee schedules and, and helping the DDC. And George, you described my, uh, to Al, my brain perfectly, cloud storage. That's definitely, uh, sometimes how I think, as you can probably tell. I told Franny, seeing how, you know, he kind of got put to the side, I'd still work on the barn and patch it up as a phone guy carpenter. So if you see crooked boards across it, it hasn't been broken into, I'm just trying to hold it together. Because, uh, you know, he does a great job, again, we don't always appreciate all these guys, but, uh, I mean, there's four of them, I can't find the other three, but I know there's four Frannies, because he's everywhere you go in town, and he's there, he doesn't hide well, and that's a compliment. I did find out about a deluxe toilet, uh, the hard way, because we hold tractor pulls at the track about behind the auger barn. And we actually have female tractor pullers. And their definition of a deluxe toilet is one that has paper in it. So I personally check via Franny's recommendation, we deal with Mr. Golia, and we get at least two rolls of paper at the start of the track for Saturday morning. So that is how I've been told a deluxe toilet. Being a man, it's not always quite the issue that they have. But again, we've had female participation, so we always make them feel welcome. We order, and, and Mr. Golia will agree, we, you know, we make them feel welcome, and, and Franny's kept the place up good, so we do know what that means. I mean, I was, one lady pulled me aside and said, "You're out of paper." So we, we do, we dealt with that. And, uh, like I said, I always appreciate everything you guys do. You've got the hardest job, the worst-paying job, the hours suck, and, but I, you're, you're appreciated personally by me. I love this town, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else along the shoreline. And like I said, we have a nemesis, it's like, uh, that mountain, it's. And like I said, we have a nemesis, it's like, uh, that mountain, it's beautiful, but it's a nightmare. But, I mean, if you, if you, and you probably know, there's problems in the other shoreline towns, like we, we really, we have our own problems, there's some real issues in some of the shoreline towns, and this still is family in this town. I mean, uh, we get along pretty well, and, uh, like I say, you guys have always been receptive, and, and if you can do anything, you always do, and it's a great town to live in, and you guys are responsible for a good portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, adjournment?
Sumo.